Meeting, regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee to Order. We are meeting via Zoom and at this time I would like to ask folks to stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So before we begin, I want to acknowledge the fact that Brooke Clancy isn't with us this evening. Todd will be taking her place tonight. Brooke has allowed me to share with everyone that earlier in the week she injured her back and yesterday was hospitalized and will remain in the hospital overnight. She expects to be released tomorrow. And the other thing she said it was fine to share is that she was tested for COVID and is negative. So I hope she gets a lot of rest while she's in the hospital and wish her a speedy recovery. So.
Did you speak with her, Kathy? And she's feeling, she's feeling better.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Thank you. Okay, so now I have some citizens' comments. The first is from Janet O'Shea in Bolton. I'm extremely disappointed that the high school is in full remote despite the fact that we have numbers that support students returning to school. Based on the recommendations from DESC and Governor Baker, the reasoning behind this decision seems to be primarily due to the poor ventilation and air quality in the building, and there appears to be no plan to improve this situation until a new high school is built. Based upon this information, I have three questions that I would like answered. It sounds like there is a high probability that the high school will be closed for the remainder of this year, possibly next year, as well as given the predictions that COVID will not be under control within the next 12 months and that there is no plans to improve air quality or come up with alternative sites for in-person learning for our high school students. Therefore, when will the committee be notified that the high school will be closed for the remainder of the year and possibly into next year so that families can make decisions to enroll students in private schools or move to other communities? For families who have current high school students that are functioning with inadequate technology, which causes them to miss large chunks of instruction due to Chromebooks malfunctioning, would the district consider purchasing upgraded Chromebooks or laptops? That could better handle remote learning for our juniors and seniors who have the oldest models of these devices. Would the school committee and the superintendent be willing to work directly with other communities to provide school choice opportunities for our high school students and our neighboring communities that are providing hybrid learning models? As a parent and taxpayer, I think it is important to know whether our high school will be providing an in-person education over the next two to four years. Families need this information in order to make informed decisions about their future as Bolton-Stowe and Lancaster residents. Number two, we attended a listening session over Zoom, very graciously held by Mike Horash and Amy Cohen on October 5th. Over 40 parents attended and everyone was extremely grateful to Mike and Amy for allowing parents to express their concerns. You will likely hear a summary of those concerns from Mike and Amy, though we understand it will be delayed by two weeks due to the issue of not being allowed to add it to the agenda. Today, we met with Principal Steve Cullinan, per Brooke's suggestion, had a very constructive and informative meeting and appreciate Steve's precious time to meet with us. We know all teachers and staff in the high school are working tirelessly to support and teach our children, albeit remotely, with extraordinary effort, for example, Mr. Poirier. From this meeting, we have the following three key areas of interest. Facilities for the rooms of concern due to inadequate airflow. Is there a report delineating the issues where we can, where can we access this report? And have HEPA filters for those classrooms been purchased? Can other members, measures be taken to ensure that a sufficient number of air exchanges can be achieved in most classrooms? Sounds like filters are backward and if so, until when? Without upgrading these rooms, are we saying students cannot enter those classrooms, even masked, until they are repaired as ever? MOU slash live streaming. Why can we not eliminate this provision from the MOU like many area schools and districts? This would enable live streaming cohort A while cohort B learns remotely in a hybrid model. In Pittsburgh and Lexington, high schools are allowing it. Why can't Neshoba, how can the school committee or community make this happen? Pool testing. Has the administration investigated pool testing? The NRHS could perform weekly pool testing, meaning each person in the group provides a sample which is combined as one of five groups. Teachers and staff in four grade levels. Test is positive, drill down to determine who in the group is infected, but if negative, in-person learning can occur. This technique is being used by some colleges to keep costs down. Also, area schools are starting to use testing now, Wellesley High School. Pool testing would be an easier and cheaper approach to assess infection at our high school and potentially allow full in-person school for those who want it. There are many details to work out, but with unique concerns about the building and live streaming, we believe it should be investigated. Is our understanding that there are no metrics or plans to return to school this year or anytime soon? The above questions, if resolved, would enable a way forward toward either part-time or full-time, full-in-person learning. Vaccine will not be 100% effective and our school building will not be replaced for at least four to five years. If the administration has other creative ideas they are considering, please communicate with the district parents and students. We would appreciate detailed and direct answers to our questions in a timely fashion. And that's Tracy and Joel Lindsay from Bolton. Next letter is from Tatiana Fabarova, who is from Bolton. K-2 hybrid students, what is the plan for bringing these kids back to school? There are currently 12 to 13 kids in a class. Which should be manageable to facilitate in school? The biggest challenge for kids is socialization. Working parents have to enroll the kids into another form of care. In addition to costing money, also increases their exposure to COVID for everybody. Please provide the plan for Wednesday's teaching. Our fifth grader was done with remote learning portion of the day at 11:30. This is very far from a full day of teaching. I believe I speak on behalf of many parents whose kids are in the hybrid version of schooling. Our assumption was that there was going to be some level of remote teaching provided to our kids on the remote days. As it appears right now, there is no teaching provided at all and is at the discretion of the student to do their homework. What is the school district's plan to resume teaching remotely or in person for the remote days? And the last comment is from Lindsay Dida, who is from Stowe. I'm sure you have gotten innumerable emails from the community expressing anger and frustration over the outcome of this school year. I wanted to instead write an email supporting you, the school committee, and the unenviable job you have been tasked with this year. Have a freshman at Neshoba and a fourth grader at Center, and I have been disgusted with the complaining and general mean spirit of the community. There is no question that none of this is what anyone would want, but this is what we have to deal with. My children, elementary students hybrid, are doing okay because we chose to be positive in our house. My daughter is easing into freshman year in a way that might actually be helpful in making the transition from middle school. My husband is a physician who has cared for many COVID patients and we truly understand how grave things are and how one death is too many. We also choose to trust you and the school committee to do the best for our children. I can't imagine a single person who devotes all this time for free not having their best interests in mind. So while you are inundated with anger, please note that there are lots of parents who support the district. We probably outnumber those who do not, but of course, the angry ones are the loudest ones. Okay, so the, I'm gonna skip to something under my update because I informed you all that I would like to experiment with a way of moving through our meeting and agenda. So the consent agenda has been moved from the end of the meeting to the beginning of the meeting. So Elaine, would you read a motion?
Here, I move to approve the consent agenda of October 7th, 2020, continuing the meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2020, and the warrants of October 9th, 2020.
Can I have a second, please? Steve, second? Oh, oh.
Okay.
Let's give it to Steve. Sorry, Sam first. Okay, Steve seconded. Okay, a roll call vote, Cody and yes, Cohen? Think we lost her. Brett?
Yes.
Is Rich here?
Yes.
Okay, I know you're here. Does that mean you approve? Are you voting yes, too?
Yes, double yes.
Thank you. Joseph?
Yes.
Mike Horash?
Triple yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Is Sharon?
Hi, I am.
Oh, here you are.
Yeah, I was having trouble getting on, so I can't vote. I don't know what you're voting on, sorry.
Okay, I'll put an abstain, is that okay?
Sure.
All right. Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yeah.
And Leah? So that's.
Leah's power is out as well, so she's trying to.
One.
Plan.
Okay, so we'll put her down as an A. All right, so in any event, it passes and I think Leah and Sharon and Amy are offline, so that would be eight, eight yeas. Three no powers, if that's a thing. Okay, all right. I have just a few things to update folks with. The tri-town meeting is next Wednesday, October 14th, 7:00 PM via Zoom, being hosted in Stowe. So in the past, I have said that these meetings are optional and they are. I would, though, like to encourage folks to attend this one. It's the first one of the year and we have a new town administrator in Stowe. And I think it would be great if we all showed up to welcome her and also overpower her with our just group, our mass. But it's totally up to you. I know there's a new selectman in Lancaster. I don't know if the other towns have new people on their select boards.
Yep, there's two new ones in Stowe.
Okay, and what about Bolton? Did we lose all the Bolton people? Oh, there's like.
I don't believe that there's a change.
Okay, so I just think for the first one, if we could show up, because certainly we have new folks, that would be great. These meetings last maybe an hour and so please keep that in mind. I'll send out a reminder at the beginning of the week. So we will be having a Robert's Rules workshop on November 17th, prior to the school committee meeting that night. It will be via Zoom from 4:50 to 5:50. The presenter will be Glenn Kuchar, who is the Executive Director of MASC and according to Dorothy Presser, this is his team. So I'm sure he'll, he'll give us a general presentation, but if you have questions, specific questions for him, it would be great to get them to him ahead of time. Again, I will send out a reminder at the beginning of November. And then on December 16th, we'll have a school committee legal issues workshop. Again, before that December 16th meeting, from 4:50 to 5:50 via Zoom with Mike Macaro. Both the Robert's Rules workshop and the legal issues workshops are voluntary in recognition of veteran members who have taken the legal issues workshop last year. And also, I know there were some members who could probably teach the workshop on Robert's Rules. So I hope you will consider attending if you're new. But again, with the legal issues, it's always helpful for Mike Macaro. If we get him some questions ahead of time, there'll be some things he wants to cover with us, but he's also there to answer specific questions that we have. So those are the, the, some plans. The other thing I just want to reiterate is this new meeting format that we're trying. And that is by organizing the agenda in, categorizing agenda items in two ways. They may be information only, which means that the school committee, I read, school committee does not have to take any action. In, at previous meetings, we sometimes get bogged down in discussing them and I know there's interest. So what I've asked folks to do is to send questions ahead of time. We get them, the presenters, and then they get hopefully incorporated into the presentations. During the follow-up for things that are information only, I would like folks to confine their remarks to either two comments, two questions, or a question and a comment. And Amy's trying to join Alita. So, okay. And then for AR, action required. So these are the things that we will ultimately have to vote on. They require more discussion in many cases. And so that will be what we do, but I will have a, a format for approaching them to keep us moving along. But there will not be limits to time at this point. So I just really want to see how it goes. So are there any questions for me so far?
I had one quick question.
Yes, Rich.
And sorry to drag you back one item. Is there an actual agenda for the tri-town?
A big part? Is there any?
Is there an actual agenda?
Yes, there will be and once we get it, I will send it out to the whole school committee. I don't think we've gotten it yet, have we, Alita?
All right, I'm fumbling here. No, she's just asking for agenda topics now.
Okay, all right, so we will get that out as soon as we, we get them, we'll push it out. Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I, I told you earlier, but I'll tell the whole committee. I think this format is a really good one, so thanks for pushing it forward.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a pilot. Let's call it a pilot and see how we do. Thanks, Rich. Are we ready to move forward? Okay, Todd is going to present the Assistant Superintendent's report and there may be some stuff from Brooke perhaps, Todd?
Yeah, we did, you know, some of the things that I'll, we'll cover later on too that are the, are the agenda that we spoke of briefly today. So most of them are from me, however, in terms of updates for the committee. And also in terms of the questions that were put forward, we definitely worked to make sure that answers to those questions that you folks had could be embedded in our presentations tonight from the middle school principals, from the high school addendum, et cetera. So we hope to be able to have answered those questions already in the presentations that we give you tonight. So, so the first item I have is again, a huge congratulations to Luther Burbank Middle School, Principal Friend, Assistant Principal Grant, and the entire faculty and staff at Luther Burbank. The National Blue Ribbon Award followed in 2019 selection by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as a school of recognition. Luther Burbank was one of only, 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 the only middle school in the state of Massachusetts to earn the recognition in three categories. The nomination for middle school referenced innovation in curriculum and teaching methods, inclusion of all types of learners, and the integration of varied arts and cultural programming within and beyond the school day. It also referenced the fact that student engagement, such as the greeting of each student by name as they walk down the hallway in the morning and advisory is central to a school's success. So huge congratulations, this is an enormous award for the middle school. So we're really, really proud of Principal Friend and her school. The next piece is the update on the high school mascot. I did speak with Superintendent Clancy briefly about this today. We have reached out to Hurd Strategy in Worcester, Massachusetts, who's an organization who will work with us in strategizing our next steps for our high school mascot. We will be engaging with this group in the near future, who works with organizations on ways to identify and communicate solutions with groups facing challenges and developing new ideas for their programs and for their schools. We have scheduled our initial meeting with this group and will report back on next steps in regards to the process to move forward in engaging the community. The next piece is around school open houses. All schools in our district are conducting virtual open houses for parents this week and next. Principals are working with their staff and developing an evening that allows parents a chance to meet their child's teacher and glean information about classes and the curriculum in either a remote or a hybrid learning environment. Information has been sent to families on the dates and times of these open houses and they are also listed on the front webpage in our newsletter that was dated on October 2nd, 2020, which was posted this past Friday. In terms of communication and about that posting, in an effort to enhance our communication, the central office is now posting our memos and newsletters to our front district webpage with any and all current information for families in the community. Please check out our latest memo, which includes information on open houses, remote learning, the high school mascot, and any celebratory news. You may have noticed that that was posted on the front webpage to provide ease for people to link onto it and for it to be updated in real time as well. The next piece is around professional development and it comes from the Teaching and Learning Department. We're currently working on next steps for this month's professional development, which will include the rollout of our new professional development and educator evaluation tracking platform called Teach Point to our district. Teachers will participate in webinars and workshops designed to help them navigate this new platform, as well as spend time on their individual self-assessments, goal development, and educator plans for the school year. The Teach Point system will allow for an organized way for teachers to track their professional development and their process and progress as an educator. And then finally, I'm gonna share my screen if I can, Alita. We have our second Teaching and Learning newsletter called The Download to share with you folks tonight. We continue to receive some great feedback from the community on the resources, the tips and professional development opportunities that we're providing in this weekly memo, as well as the office hours that we're dedicating to staff this year. And so just to show you, I know I did forward it to Kathy. It just came out late yesterday, so we're happy to forward it along to you folks. We're still.
I did send it along, Todd.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Yeah, I did send it along.
I have a look at it, very similar to the last one where we're spotlighting an educator and we're providing updates on SCL, focus indicators for the year, and a lot of updates and some tips and tricks. So again, we've gotten some great feedback from that. Again, it's more in effort to continue to promote more communication within the district and to give people a sense of what's going on from the Teaching and Learning Department, as well as across the district in multiple classrooms. So that's my update for you.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
So Superintendent, report is information only, so if anybody has a question or comment relative to what was presented in that report, please let me know and I will recognize you. Oh, Mike?
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. I could, I'm just, I have two questions about the mascot update, just for the, for the towns and the, and the audience. Can you just clarify what the approximate cost will be to hire that consultant?
For what, what do you, which topic is this?
The high school mascot.
Oh, okay.
So that's gonna be part of the, the first initial meeting with them. So that's just been scheduled. So like I said, we'll, we'll come back and provide the feedback from that meeting once we have it.
If I might, Todd, the contract, the services that the company provides is pro bono. So the consultation services, and it's something that, that he's done for other schools in the district. Are you talking about other costs, Mike?
Nope, that's what I meant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think, Steve, did you have your hand up? Steve, no?
I had a second question, sorry, follow.
Okay, you've got one more.
All right, one more. Dr. McGuire, do you anticipate at this point, when we're talking about a community engagement with the, with regards to the mascot, are we talking about teachers, parents, community members, students?
Based on the feedback that, you know, we've gotten from a variety of constituents, I think that we assume that that to be the case so that we can include multiple constituencies from the district on that. And just given, you know, the wide breadth of feedback in letters and memos we've received some, from so many people, as well as alumni, I would definitely see that to be the case.
Great, so again, I actually, early in July, spoke with Jake Messier, who is the Director of Hurd Strategies and Storytelling, it's his company. And that's part of the process to engage the, whatever stakeholders. So yeah, Mike, but the, the locus of control of this process is at the high school, but his process is inclusive and they do the surveys and they guide folks through that process. Mary, question, comment?
So comment, it's a comment. And, and Dr. McGuire, and Teaching and Learning, this is really recognizing and congratulating you on this issue of Download. So, so much valuable information. And when we think about what we're able to do through technology, so rather than including something from Edutopia, you know, there's a link there. And I would encourage families, parents to go and, and read this information, read about SEL, social and emotional learning, because there is a wealth of information here. So, so well done and keep it up, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Elaine, did you have your hand up? No. Who else had a hand up? Oh, Amy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering whether we'll get an update on the MSBA committee formation.
This is not part of this, I don't think, I think it's later in the agenda.
Oh, it is, okay, thank you.
Yes, okay. All right, so thank you, Todd. So the next item of business is the high school addendum to the handbook. So this is an action required. What I'd like to do is have Steve Cullinan give us an overview and then I would like Elaine to read the motion. After it is seconded, I will open up for discussion and questions. After it is seconded, I will open up for discussion and questions. Okay?
Can I just tee that up for Steve before he starts?
Sure.
Of course.
I just want to thank Steve and his admin team for putting this together. You folks saw the handbook and approved the high school handbook at the end of last year. But given the state of where the high school is and in terms of where all districts are this year, they felt it very essential and important to draw up an addendum to the handbook as it relates to what is going on with remote learning. So they provided you with that addendum, and Steve is going to speak to the specific talking points in additions to the handbook tonight. So I do just want to thank his team because the amount of specificity that has gone into this to provide parents, families, and the community, certainly with the level of information and guidance in terms of navigating the remote learning model, is pretty impressive. So from there, just thanks, Steve, and to your team, and I'll hand it over to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I don't know if I'm muted or not. This is our one-page kind of explanation of what went on with this thing. You guys have all seen the original, the whole document. Essentially, what we did was we took most of our information from our original handbook or from district guidance and that type of thing. The only real changes in the handbook that we're looking at were based on the virtual classroom type of things. It's really pretty self-explanatory. There's nothing there that is super crazy. So if you guys have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
So Steve, we're actually going to make a motion to accept it. And after that, that's when I will open it up to discussion and questions. So is there anything else you wanted to add at this point?
Not in regard to the addendum. I've got a couple of other points I'd like to make if that's okay.
Absolutely.
We've had some, we did have our, we set the survey out, and we'll probably share in the survey at a different meeting. I believe that's the case. But for the most part, the survey was pretty compelling. I mean, we had a number of parents and teachers that were in favor of what we're doing remote-wise. I think my biggest challenge as a principal at this point is the question between, we're trying to make the remote learning work as best we can. And we're trying, that's what the survey was for. We're looking at the survey results. We're trying to adapt and change those things. But then we're getting all these hybrid questions. And I just want to be really clear with folks. We came to the school committee with our hybrid remote plan. And the task force that we put together with parents and teachers and students firmly believed that the remote learning plan was the best plan. We have a hybrid plan. If in fact, the hybrid plan is, we have one that we can put into place, but it's not the greatest plan in the world because it's not going to, it's not going to do a lot of the things that people think it might do. I think my biggest, I'm seeing some of the questions you folks had about the hybrid with the middle schools and from my colleagues in the central mass. They're all having difficulties with the amount of actual instruction time that they have during these hybrid periods. We believed, our task force, and that's what we expressed to you folks, was that the remote learning plan allowed us to have teachers see the students five days a week and based on the survey results, which we'll share with you at some point. I'm not sure when that's going to happen, but we're working, put them together now. The students are saying that they, like, almost 80% of the students are saying that they're learning more things from, they're learning the basis of what they have now, and they're learning more stuff than they would. If we go to a hybrid plan, what's going to happen is that's going to drop off. Now, the remote learning plan is an educationally solemn plan. The hybrid plan is more of a social plan, where the kids will be able to see each other once in a while. It's not going to be what they think it is, but they'll actually be able to interact with students and whatnot. The only point in the survey that we had that the students said that they weren't getting a lot, they weren't getting a lot of contact with other students. That's something that we're going to work on. We're going to do a meet and greet. We put it in our smore on Friday. We're doing a meet and greets. We're trying to make, we're trying to make ways that we can get students in the building so that they can interact with one another. Basically, what I'm asking is please let us, give us a chance to get the stuff, make it work, make it. Our remote plan is working pretty well. We've got to make some adaptations to it, but it's working pretty well. And I just, please give us time to do that, please. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. And what, an agenda item on the 21st will be to address some of the questions and issues that we have been hearing from people. And I think what I am seeing is that so many things that folks are asking have been answered. And so at our next meeting, there's going to be a coordinated effort to get all the ducks in a row and respond. You could tell from the citizens' comments that there are some questions that, and resources people are looking for, that we have provided. But I think, to your point, that this is something that is unfolding. I always say, we're building the plane while we're learning to fly it. So there'll be more conversation about that. But I do want to thank you for your leadership and for your leadership team and all the teachers for the work they have done.
My teachers are working so hard to make this work. I just can't, I can't express how, I mean, they're working 10, 12 hours a day because it's not easy to do these remote classes. They only teach for 50 minutes, but it takes them four hours to put those classes together. Just putting a Zoom call together takes a long time, as I hope people understand. So they're working so dang hard that it's just frustrating when I see people. I'm sorry, I'm rambling. I apologize.
No, we hear you, Steve. And I think that there's a lot of frustration to go around. But we're going to, we're going to work it out and get information out and answer questions. And that takes time as well. And it's especially frustrating, I think, when the information has been presented, you know, two or three times, but we'll get there now. Thank you, Steve. I'm glad that you took advantage of this opportunity. You fit in well with this group. You give them a topic and then they, but that's okay.
I feel like I'm here every day, so I might as well just be part of the group now.
Why not? Why not? Be careful what you wish for. But in any event, there'll be more about that. And we look forward to hearing and seeing the results of the survey. Now, for our purposes, right now, our task is to approve or don't approve the addendum to the handbook. That's all we're talking about, is the addendum to the handbook. So Elaine, would you make that motion, please?
Sure, and thank you, Steve. I move to approve the addendum to the NRHS 2020-2021 Handbook as presented.
Do I have a second? Sharon? Okay, now, discussion questions about the handbook, the addendum to the handbook, not the hybrid model, about the handbook. Okay, Amy?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. The question I have is, today, there was a loss of Wi-Fi across the district. And I'm wondering if the handbook has a policy for what to do in that situation? Because it was kind of, I got the sense that there wasn't a, this wasn't something we anticipated. And so I know it'd be helpful for kids to know what the expectation is if like Wi-Fi goes out at the high school and all the students are in the classroom on their Google Meet, which is what happened today, and the teachers weren't there.
Yeah, that happened for one period today, and we're working that situation. We have some stuff in the handbook that discusses if things go bad. But again, I've been stressing crawl, walk, run since we started this, and we're in the crawl process at this point. So, I mean, you have to react to certain issues, certain things that come about. The internet issue became a problem today. We're working that issue. We'll get stuff out to people when we find out how it plays out. And we're going to adapt, just like, it's kind of the same thing as a snow day in the winter when the school gets canceled because of its snow day. We had an electrical issue. Our power was out earlier, a couple of weeks ago. When we got there, luckily enough, the power came back on before school started, so that worked out. All this stuff is brand new to all of us. We've got to do the best we can with what we have, what we're working with. And I've been working with Dr. McGuire today about this whole situation with the computer stuff.
And Amy, that's on page eight of the addendum. There's an internet access or power outage. So that is included in the handbook.
Excellent, thank you. I'm having a hard time getting my attachments because I'm on my phone.
We feel your pain. All right, other questions for Steve? Leah, it says Anthony, and I'm, Leah, okay.
My internet is out too, and yeah. So can I ask you guys a question? And please forgive me if I forgot, if I just missed this. When was this uploaded, the addendum?
I sent out an email. I can't remember if it was Thursday or Friday. I might have sent it in two phases. But I sent out our agenda, and under each topic, I had a link to whatever materials you need so you wouldn't have to toggle back and forth.
Oh, wow, okay. So I missed this, but I am a fast reader. So I was able to just kind of skim it a little bit. So I'm still concerned about the ticket system and the Chromebooks with like kids who are experiencing difficulty there.
That has absolutely nothing to do with us. You'd have to go through the district on that. We took that directly from the district webpage.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Leah.
What I'm just wondering is when the Chromebooks, and maybe Steve, you don't know the answer to this, but if a kid has a problem with their Chromebook and they give it up to the ticket system, do you know if there's, like, do they give out loaners?
We have in the past. I don't know, there's so many Chromebooks are out there right now. I can't give you an answer on that. She would have to give you that answer. Normally, if a student has a problem, they would give them a loaner. And when the loaner comes back, they would get their Chromebook back again. I'm assuming that's the same case, but I can't. Dr. McGuire, do you know for sure if that's the case?
We certainly, they can email Chromebook Support. What they initially try to do is help the student or the family troubleshoot the issue with the Chromebook. And we do have somebody who works directly at the high school that works with that. And then if it is deemed that the Chromebook needs to come in and go out for service, we get the student and can get the student a loaner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions about the handbook? Elaine?
Thank you. There's a few instances in the addendum where it says the procedure will be left up to the teacher, things like turning the camera off, eating, using the chat feature in remote classes. And I appreciate the flexibility there because I think there's a lot of times when it makes perfect sense to do a case-by-case basis. But I'm wondering if any best practices or if any, what information has gone out to the teachers so that they can be educated on what might be appropriate, what won't be appropriate, what might be a very reasonable need for doing these sort of things and what wouldn't be.
Yes, we've put together a teacher handbook as well as a student handbook, and we didn't want to get that out to them until we got this thing passed for you folks first. But it covers all that, and we had a lot of teacher input into what we were trying to put together. We've got situations where some students are having a hard time logging in and putting their face on the screen. And we understand that, that's, we're in the crawl phase. So we're trying to, those students we're trying to work with, try to make sure that they can get themselves on there. But we absolutely have, the teachers, we have a handbook for the teachers that we're planning to push out to them as well. But they helped us work through these addendums as well, so.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Say hi to.
Thank you, hi Sydney. Other questions for Steve? Are we ready, oh, are we ready to move the motion?
Move the motion.
Okay, all those in favor of adopting the addendum to the student handbook, the high school, student handbook, indicate yea or nay, yes or no? Kathy Codyan, I say yes. Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Brett Collins?
Yes.
Rich Echol?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, so it is unanimously approved. Thanks again. Steve, hang in there. We got you, buddy. We'll keep on truckin'. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the middle school principal update. We had an opportunity to send questions to the presenters ahead of time. This is an information-only item. So I will turn it over to...
Can I tee it up, Kathy?
Oh, yeah, I was looking for somebody to throw to, so take it away.
I like playing superintendent. I know Brooke likes to tee. It's just part of the shtick tonight. But so, yeah, in terms of the middle school principal update, I want to thank Principal Friend, Principal Grady, Principal Bates for joining us tonight. We worked last week. I know they've been working too on this update and really trying to work on presenting a lot of things that are somewhat unique to the middle school hybrid program. And they're going to speak to a lot of those things that we don't necessarily always talk about or think about in some of the programming that they've added to the middle school hybrid program to better reach kids and engage kids, students, as they're in both, you know, in-person as well as remote. So hopefully their presentation, their presentation should address the questions that you presented to us. And they did get those questions ahead of time. So we hope that that does that. But I want to thank the three of them for being here and for presenting to you tonight on the update that they have going on in their middle schools. They'll also speak a little bit to the Remote Learning Academy that Raina Rego is overseeing for those students who are completely remote at the middle school level. She also held her parent info open house last night for that group. So I will turn it over to the middle school principals and thank them for being here.
Dr. McGuire?
Happy to share the screen if that works.
That would be great. I think either you or Elaine have our presentation.
Okay, perfect. We got it. Thanks, Alita.
Thank you, Alita. And thank you so much to the committee for allowing the middle school principals to provide an update to you this evening. We love middle school. It's hard to believe that we are approaching the second week in October. It feels as if we just started the school year. I think today was day 16 with our students. The on-ramp for the school year has been a particularly long one. And now that we're in October, it's really kind of hard to believe. I know that I speak on behalf of all of us, students, staff, and my colleagues, to say that we really have stepped into this school year with hope and enthusiasm and positivity. And we have also, staff and administration stepped into the year slowly with the utmost of care and attention to a variety of priorities. And that's where we continue to find ourselves here almost in the second week of October, where we're finding ourselves balancing priorities. And we talk about it a lot, balancing priorities for the need for physical safety, health safety for our students and staff, and balancing those priorities with the need and want to continue the learning and growth for our students academically, while managing the very important social, emotional needs we recognize that our students have to connect with their peers and with their teachers. And so this has been a very tender balancing of priorities and one that we continue... and with their teachers. And so this has been a very tender balancing of priorities and then, and one that we continue to find ourselves in today as we speak. And yet we continue to be so honored and privileged to be a part of our students' life journey. And we've really never been more honored and privileged to be a part of that journey now. And we know that it's so critically important. Uh, we'd like to thank the committee for their continued support of our work with our reopening. We know that there have, um, been many challenges. And we really appreciate the continued support that we know we received from the committee. I'd like to also personally thank my colleagues, Principal Grady and Principal Bates. I, I appreciate their collegiality and their collaboration so much. The three of us have spent a great amount of time in our virtual middle school bunker. Uh, and those are silver linings that I know I appreciate and I know I could not ask for better colleagues. So thank you and thank you for allowing us to speak about middle school and give you an update of our reopening so far to date. Um, we're going to move on to the next slide. And I'm going to let you know that as we were preparing for this middle school update tonight, we really came to the full realization and something that we already were aware of, that there's a lot of information relevant to, uh, our middle school reopening this year for both models, the hybrid model and the Remote Learning Academy model. So tonight we're really going to work to share the most salient points with you this evening related to our reopening. And we are, um, working to integrate answers to the questions that you shared with us ahead of time as well as Dr. McGuire had just referenced. And this is something that Chair Codyanne had, had just referenced is we really ask for your consideration and awareness and recognizing that our current middle school model is a working model. We are continuing to work to refine and strengthen our current model and programming for the benefit of our students in both plans, our hybrid plan and our Remote Learning Academy model. We're all about continual growth and improvement, and, uh, that is where we find ourselves in almost the second week in October. Uh, so we're continuing to work to strengthen based on feedback that we're hearing from our students, our staff and our families. So tonight's update is going to focus on three key areas. We're going to give an update about the student experience so far. Doc, uh, Principal Bates is going to speak to us about the family partnership. And Principal Grady is going to speak on behalf of the collaboration we share with the Middle School Remote Learning Academy. So I'm going to go ahead and jump into, um, my favorite topic, which is students. And I'm going to give an update about the student experience as it relates to our opening for both our hybrid students and our Remote Learning Academy students. So just as a means of review, both the hybrid model and the Remote Learning Academy have at its core four core academic classes, math, ELA, social studies and science. Spanish continuing, continues to be taught at the eighth grade level. And this year we are offering Spanish in a fully remote model. For students in the hybrid model, Spanish is scheduled for them synchronously during their learning from home days. And for our Remote Learning Academy students, Spanish is taught by the Spanish teacher from the student's hometown. Uh, so each Spanish teacher in each of the three middle schools has a section of Remote Learning Academy students built in to their schedule. This model for Spanish, uh, is working very well from our perspective. And I believe from our teacher's perspective, I can speak on behalf of our teacher, Luther Burbank, Senora Sullivan, and it's working well. In terms of core academic instruction, both models, the hybrid model and the Remote Learning Academy model provide a similar, similar amount of direct or explicit instruction in terms of minutes for students. So let me go ahead and explain. In the hybrid model, core academic classes are longer in duration. And Wednesdays provide additional synchronous remote instruction for our students. So while the remote classes in the Remote Learning Academy meet for four days, a review of total minutes overall is discrepant by just about 10 minutes between both models in the course of a given week. So due to the structure of both models, then we're able to keep instructional experience for all of our students in both models in content sync. Synchronous instruction in both models, as we're aware, is supported with asynchronous learning experience for our students. And asynchronous learning is an integral part of both models. As you're likely aware, asynchronous learning experiences can include, but are not limited to independent practice for our students or application of skills and concepts taught during synchronous or direct instruction. Um, and in many cases as well, our student, our teachers are pre-recording video instruction ahead of time and having students watch and view those videos during their asynchronous learning opportunities at home. So that when they come together as a class, they're able to collaborate and have a, a robust discourse on the topic, much like a flip classroom approach. Core academic instruction in, uh, the hybrid model is complemented by homeroom. Um, and it's important to note in, in our current model with our hybrid model, students have all classes, content area classes and related art classes with their homeroom section. This feels very different for our middle school students. Uh, additionally, they have their classes taught to them in their homeroom section with teachers traveling in the most part to them. And this is to support our, um, safety protocols that we have embedded in, um, throughout our school day. We really do recognize that this looks and feels very different from our traditional middle school model, but our primary goal has been to maintain distancing and restrict act, interactions between homeroom sections. And we recognize that we may need to pivot as we move forward, but this is the current working plan and seems to be working well for our students and for our staff. In addition to core academic instruction, um, learning is complemented by related arts and advisory for students in both models. At the K to eight level, we have adjusted our related arts offerings in the way we've offered them. At the middle level, students have two related arts per trimester. And they have a different two for each trimester. And therefore by the end of the school year, they will have experienced six. This model, um, has helped our students with a more sustained and consistent experience with related arts. In the hybrid model, our related arts classes have been structured to be longer in duration. This has allowed us to reduce the number of transitions in a school day and also work to maximize instructional time for our students and enable our students to actually begin have a middle and an end to projects and those really important classes. Um, of note, we are further providing band and instrumental lessons fully remotely as well in all three middle schools. Advisory is an important part. I know we've spoken to the committee before about advisory. It continues to be an important part of social emotional learning for our students. Advisory has been embedded into the schedule for our hybrid students and our Remote Learning Academy students on Wednesdays. We had advisory today. And this virtual model for advisory is neat because it allows for our students to be grouped together. Our hybrid students from both cohorts and our students in the Remote Learning Academy to be able to come together to stay connected, um, and make new connections with peers maybe that they wouldn't necessarily come into contact with. As I know you're, you're aware, uh, to support students in our hybrid model, our day is further filled out with mass breaks which have been built into the master schedule. Recess has also been included and outdoor learning options are available in all three buildings, although it's getting a little chilly. Um, as is consistent with all things related to our reopening and the balancing of those priorities. Protocols have been established for just about every single component of the school day, including mass breaks and recess and outdoor learning. We like to also talk to you about synchronous check-ins and what those are looking like for our students. Synchronous check-ins at the middle level have been built, built into students' schedules during their learning. Or remote days for students in the hybrid model. These synchronous check-ins serve three purposes. They, um, serve a purpose of taking attendance. They serve as a purpose for a social emotional touchstone. And they are really helping to work to ensure that students, um, have some executive functioning support, which we know is really important, uh, at the middle school level. All students at the middle school level have a minimum of one synchronous check-in on their learning from home days. And some of our students, identified students depending upon individual need. Specifically, our students with individual education plans, um, students have two and some of our students have three additional synchronous check-ins built into their individual schedule. These sessions, these additional sessions look like small group work, um, with it, with an instructional assistant or another educator within the building. And then finally, we are super pumped to offer a wide range of extracurricular activities for our students in both models. These are also and will be offered virtually. And Principal Grady is going to be elaborating on our related arts offerings here momentarily. Um, and then to kind of wrap up the student experience, um, in terms of explanation here on the next slide, Alita. Um, our next steps as it relates to our student experience, we are really excited at the middle level to be rolling out a new tool and that is a virtual student planning tool. And, um, we're really looking to that as to be a one kind of stop shopping hub for our students to be able to access assignments, um, at a weekly or monthly glance of a virtual student planner, if you will. And all three middle schools are implementing that. It's called my homework app and we're really excited about that. As well, we're also exploring, um, virtual assemblies and virtual field trips. And working with our Remote Learning Academy as well. We know of the importance of including the students in our full remote model, making sure that they're included with all of those opportunities and as well. And we're fully committed to doing so. And then finally, in terms of student feedback, I think anecdotally, um, it's been really neat to see the kids back in the building. They're really excited to, um, be back, to see their teachers and to see one another. And so that's been neat to see feedback from the students and advisory has been positive and, um, and that is exciting. But formally, on a formal letter, um, uh, our teachers are going to be surveying our students to get their feedback next week. Um, and in all three buildings and they're going to be asking students what it's like from their perspective. Um, how, what is work looking like for you at home? What further supports do you need? How long are you spending on your homework during synchronous days? How long is your work taking during asynchronous learning days? What do you need from us? Um, questions like that. And so our teachers are in the process of soliciting feedback from the students and we'll take a look at that together. And as well, we're going to talk to you about family surveys that are also going to be going out. And I believe that Principal Grady has already sent out his family survey. So he's already started to get that feedback. And so those, that feedback will, will come together in, in a comprehensive picture of what it's like from the student perspective and from the family perspective. And of course, we're always asking for our staff perspectives as well because they have an important voice in, um, in the picture as well. So now I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Principal Bates and he's going to talk to us about the family partnership that we share.
Thank you. Alita, if you could go to the next slide. Uh, I would like to echo Principal Friend's, um, comments and, uh, thank you, all of you for your partnership, uh, with us. We know that the nature of these new models, um, required us to, to, uh, rethink, uh, how we were going to, uh, provide our students and our staff and our communities with an experience, given the procedures that we needed to put in place. And, and that began with our district steering committee and our building-based reopening task forces, um, and of which so many of you were, were of a vital part. And we're grateful for that work. And what we have been able to do is to develop these plans. And, and now as Principal Friend, um, detailed, put them into practice. And having them on paper is one thing, living them is, is quite another. And, um, and we're getting there, but that requires a consistent, um, partnership, uh, in, in which our schools are transparent with our families about what we're trying to do. And, you know, what aspects of the, of that reopening plan are working and where we can be better. And, uh, and to that end, we had, uh, we have and had a process that involved, as you're aware, the parent information sessions where we were able to roll out our schools, uh, plans based on the work of the working groups and the reopening task forces, which, uh, dealt with school-specific procedures and traffic and, um, uh, you know, lunch procedures and those kinds of things. It also required us to, um, have our teachers go back to the drawing board in terms of introducing themselves to their families, um, and, and the students. Because the, the cohorts and the model that we settled on, uh, for the cohorts required changes to, uh, the way that classes were put together. Um, I, again, I, I speak for my colleagues as well, that we're grateful for the support in, um, the Remote Learning Academy and building up that team. And what that has meant in terms of supporting all of our students across the district. As, as Principal Cullinan, um, detailed to you, it also required us to look at our handbooks and to update those handbooks relative to, uh, not only the COVID procedures, but procedures that have had an impact, a, as a result of the hybrid model or the, the remote model. Our next steps, or we're in the process of our next steps, is to have the curriculum nights where we build on that partnership with our families and, uh, welcome our families. Last night Florence Sawyer School welcomed, uh, families, uh, from kindergarten through grade four. And, um, on Monday, uh, the Remote Learning Academy at the middle level had, um, their curriculum night slash open house. And, um, tomorrow night, uh, Florence Sawyer and, and Hale and Luther Burbank will, um, uh, virtually open up the buildings to, uh, to our families in, in grades, five through eight at Florence Sawyer and six through eight at, at Hale and Luther Burbank. And, and that's another opportunity for us to, um, explain our programs and our procedures. But the focus is for the parents to, um, get a chance to meet all the teachers, learn a little bit more about the teachers and get a curriculum, curriculum overview of, um, what their children will be learning through the course of their, their, their year. And the next steps, continuing that partnership is to, um, uh, because the curriculum night is a traditional open house format where, uh, families are learning, you know, sort of the broad overview. It's, it's not intended to be an opportunity to be able to ask questions about individual student progress. To that end, we have our parent teacher conferences, which are scheduled for the 22nd and 23rd. And information will be or is on its way, I guess, in the newsletters explaining to parents how to, uh, access those, those virtual conference times as well. Um, but there are next steps, uh, as well, um, in our family partnership and Principal Friend, started to talk about, um, that feedback loop and the importance of, um, understanding at a, at a, at a, you know, from, from an end user perspective, what's working and what isn't. She mentioned our advisory. My, I had my advisory this morning as well. And, and I'm just so grateful for that time to be able to talk with students and to, to help them build their confidence to, um, and trust in me to say. and to, to help them build their confidence to, and trust in me to say, what's working and what isn't. And so as Principal Friend mentioned, that we have a vehicle in place for our teachers to solicit and to process feedback from students with some guiding questions in areas that we, we really want to know where we can be better. And Alita, you can go to the next slide. And that we, we will all have an additional survey that will go out to our families, you know, to, to, to keep that feedback loop in place and, and to help us gather the data that will help us continually improve the models that we have. And with that, I will turn it over to Principal Grady.
Thank you, Principal Bates. Would you mind going to the next slide, Alita? So there was a number of different questions around, like how is the learning experience similar for the, the different models? You know, the RLA and the hybrid. So I'm going to work to try to address that in, in this part of the presentation. I first want to say, and I imagine Kathy could, could recall in her time as an administrator, that when you work in a regionalized school district, you're always talking about making sure that things are equitable across the towns that you work in. I can remember when I started my, my first year here, you know, that was something like the drumbeat. Brooke was always like, making sure we are all in somewhat of a similar ballpark. And I can tell you that one of the things that we've learned through, through this, you know, the planning process this summer is that we've collaborated in a way across the three towns that I can't think of ever doing before. And I've worked in two regionalized school districts. This is, it's been a very illuminating process. I think, I think what's happened in, in doing this is we've, you know, we've learned a lot about how things operate six to eight in, in our, in our district. And we've seen some ways that we're doing things in each of our buildings that are very different and, and exciting. And we've been able to borrow some of that stuff and, and put it into place in our own separate buildings. I think when doing this like sort of deep dive into planning, we've realized too that, you know, there's some deficits and we're working towards resolving those. And I can say that we're confident that whatever those deficits are and whether it's RLA or whether it's the higher model, we're confident that we're going to be able to shore those up. You know, that's the whole process of getting feedback from our students, our parents and our staff. So I, I did not know as much about Luther Burbank. I did not know anything. I mean, Joel, I didn't, I didn't realize the weight that was on Joe's shoulders and being the principal for, you know, a K to H school. So it really, it came to light during our planning this summer. And what's going to come out of that is some fruitful development that's going to be beyond just this school year. It'll go into years beyond this. So let's just talk about that collaboration. So here what you've got are some key areas where the hybrid and the RLA schooling and the models are in lockstep. So first of all, it starts with the people who are in leadership position. So we have weekly leadership meetings with Raina Rago. And that's where we just go through, like it could be a, a situation that came up that we didn't know about, or it could be something that we know we need to look at. Recently, it's been put since around, how do we? So, you know, those sorts of things, we just kind of, we, we just bring it to those meetings and we try to flush through it and come up with answers and solutions. It's really an action-based type of meeting. The other thing is the hometown to school connections. This is a big question that came up and I think we constantly have this from our families that are in the RLA. How are those students staying connected to their, their home schools? So we've been intentional around that. So first of all, it starts with the extracurriculars. I think we're all going to be rolling out those extracurriculars within the next two weeks if we haven't already. And that, those are, those are obvious connections. And those are, those are important connections. Those are things where it's not about academics. It's where kids are, you know, maybe learning about coding or, you know, they're, they're connecting with a, a person or a teacher that on a subject that they're not normally interested into. Like I'm thinking like the environmental club or something like that. So those are important connections for both the RLA students. Advisory, it's been talked about. I think two out of the three middle schools have advisory up and running. I know that Hale should have that up and running within the next week or so. Service providers is an important one. That's those, those are those students who are getting additional services. It could be guidance services. That's being supplied to the Remote Learning Academy students and the hybrid students by those, by their hometown service providers. Moving on to the schedule coordination. This was a huge component of the summer planning. Making sure that our schedules worked not only for each of our buildings, but also worked for all three towns in this unique Remote Learning Academy. It was, it really started with creating a daily schedule because we do share staff. We have staff that are working both in RLA and in our hometowns. It's coordinated across three towns so that our schedules are aligned and that it provides equitable access for students who, who are getting information and instruction from both their core academic teachers, their related arts teachers and their support staff. A very, very exciting component of this was being able to offer instrumental music. You know, our, our, our music teachers were chomping at the bit this summer to, to, to make sure that they were all able to offer instrumental music. And we, we, we got it. And we totally understood that it was such an important component because it's a skill that they need to continue to practice. And like any skill, if you don't practice it, you lose it. So that's something that's happening for, for our RLA students and our hybrid students in both, all through, all of the three towns. Like was mentioned before, events, although not in-person events, but those, you know, whether they're field trips, virtual field trips or virtual assemblies, we absolutely want to include both groups of students. You know, thinking ahead, we're going to have to start thinking about things like how do we do an eighth grade promotional ceremony in this, in this new world? We've got some experience from last year, but it'll be different with our Remote Learning Academy students and, you know, incorporating and both groups into one promotional ceremony. Finally, related arts. And this is really an important backbone to it. But that, these, the related arts students are still receiving instruction from student, from teachers that are in their hometowns. And I often, and I imagine Principal Friend and Principal Bates are doing this thing. I often go to those related arts teachers to just get a pulse on how things are going with the Remote Learning Academy because really they're, you know, they're a primary contact for us and they really walk this line between the two models. So although, you know, we're listening to the feedback and we continue to evolve, I can say, I think I speak for the three of us that we're confident that that we're going to continue to figure out any of the issues that we're facing. And what we're going to have at the end of this is a, is a really impressive model where we've got really four schools operating in this regional school district. And the last slide, Alita, if you wouldn't mind. Some things that we're looking at, we've talked about surveying parents and students. But one thing that we're looking at, and this is a solution beyond just Remote Learning Academy. We're looking at solutions for teacher absences. So we've put out a couple of different ideas and we're working through what those might be. I don't think right now we have a, an answer to that, but I know we've got a couple of different options that we're looking at. So I believe that said, right? Principal Friend, Principal Bates?
Thank you. Would you take any questions if you have?
Okay, so let me start. Rich Ekel is, we're having some technical difficulties, but I will start with Rich because I can't see him raise his hand. And so Rich, do you have any questions or comments?
No, not at this time. Thank you for asking.
I'll, I'll come back to you. All right. Other questions, comments for the principals? Amy?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering if you could provide any more detail on the extracurricular activities that you're thinking about rolling out within the next two weeks?
Sure. So we won't be able to do all of the extracurricular activities that we typically do. But a number of our extracurricular advisors have stepped up and are willing to offer a virtual format. So a very popular one, the Investors Club. We've actually presented to school committee in the past. Will be running. The GSA will be running. Student Council will be running. Robotics is currently running. We won't be able to do the kind of interscholastic or intramural athletic activities that we've done in the past. But I know Athletic Director Rich has already explained that to you. I, I think for the most part, our extracurricular activities are pretty similar across the three schools. I would add in, we've already spoken about instrumental music and chorus as well. And I expect that at least at Florence Sawyer School, that list will be coming out, as Principal Grady said, in the next week or so, with the intention of having them start the following week.
Other questions or comments? Leah?
Thank you, principals. That was really great and informative. This is probably a question more for Todd. I was very interested in understanding how we're handling teacher absences. Just doesn't seem like we're, where we need to be, but the problem has to be underway quite a bit already. So do you guys have, can you get, can you give us any detail on how you're handling this?
Sure. So we certainly, you know, are looking at finding substitutes and we continue our outreach. I know that I've spoken with Anne Marie at length too, in terms of outreach to other school districts as well as, you know, looking at their list of substitutes that they have in other districts, if they're not necessarily utilizing all of their substitutes. And I can say too, that we're currently in process of, you know, formulating a plan so that we can deal with the issue of substitutes. Because certainly, you know, it becomes, it becomes an issue when people are unable to teach and unable to be either in school in the hybrid format. And I don't know if Anne Marie, you want to add to that for us?
Sure. You know, given the pandemic, I mean, substitutes are in short supply to be sure. And every potential course of action, of course, you know, has implications for other scenarios as they come up. As a practical matter though, I made it a point this week to one of my projects is to personally telephone 10 people each day. Five people who are on our substitute list but have not been active yet this year. Many of our most dedicated and consistent substitutes are retired teachers. Not as young as they used to be perhaps. And some of them are, are taking a step back and some of them really just have, have got concerns, you know, about coming in. And sometimes we're able to address them and tell them what it's like so that we can perhaps make them feel a little bit more comfortable about coming in. We did, we have gotten two people new this week to come onto our sub-rolls and they'll be as active as they, you know, as they dare to be. You know, we'll have them come in whenever they want to be. There's plenty of work for them. The other five calls I've been trying to make daily are to people who were unsuccessful applicants or different ones of our positions, calling them to see if they have found something. And if not, if they wanted to, us keep, keep their fingers in the educational world, you know, by substituting for us. So there's a lot of things that we're, that we're doing. It's like, like I said, it's one of the deficits that's, that's part of this. We are, we want, as a public health matter, you know, we're, we want people to not come to work if they're potentially got COVID symptoms. The downside of that, of course, is that they don't come to work if they've got COVID symptoms. So it's, we're kind of caught in the catch 22, but it's one of the things that we're having continuing discussions, you know, ongoing. Make it better.
Other questions? Leah, last question for you. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, I think that part, like half of the problem is substitutes because it's about teachers who are legitimately ill. But my bigger concern is how we're handling it when teachers are doing the right thing. They're staying, they wake up with a scratchy throat and they're saying, it's probably not best if I go in today. I, I would think that it would be a pretty easy switch to flip, to say teachers who are feeling capable but must stay home can still teach today. Right? Because that's what's best for our kids. So I just wonder where we are around that because I know it's a labor issue, but that's really what I'm asking about.
Sure. You know, that's, that's a potential course of action. That's a potential solution. But that's one of the ones that does get implications beyond that particular, the particular scenario that you have. So it's something that we really need to reflect on and think through all the ramifications. And those are some of the conversations. There are other scenarios and eventualities that would be impacted by that decision. So those are things that we need to talk through completely. And that's where we are now.
Oh, can I suggest that we have this as an agenda item on our next meeting? So that I, I understand what folks are saying. I have questions relative to, you know, remote teacher. You can't do your job that day and there's a sub. How do they know? I mean, it's, it's, it's different than the usual sub thing. So I'm going to put that on, on as an agenda item for next time, the 21st. Other questions or comments for the principals? Elaine?
Yeah, first, thank you for making that an agenda item because I have gotten to experience remote substitutes firsthand this week. And the stress level on those teachers is unsustainable, I think I'll say right now. So I appreciate that you're looking into ways to try to mitigate that. But my question's actually about like attendance and engagement from students, particularly those that are remote or on their remote days. Do we have any information yet about, you know, the percentage of kids that are logging in? How, like how many times are they logging in per day? Things like that, so we can get an understanding if any kids are, you know, missing or falling through the cracks.
We, we do, which is a great function right now of Google Meet, is Google Meet does capture an attendance list and it does capture the duration for which students are on those, on those calls, on those meetings, and then it's sent automatically to teachers. So that's very new. I mean, that just rolled out, I believe. It was just announced by Google last week and it's starting to be rolled out this week. So there's a learning curve for teachers to understand and how to, how to really play with that data. But I think as far as attendance is concerned, I can only speak for Hale. I think our, our attendance has, has been, has been really great. We have students who are eager to, to, to learn from their teachers. Have certainly had snafus with kids being able to get in or dropping a letter off of a, a meeting invitation. You know, we're just now starting to do our first rounds of assessments in all of our classes. So it'll be interesting to see where kids land. You know, we're having a lot of quests right now where we're entering the assessment phase kind of gently without big major assessments. You know, we, we, we're tinkering with how we do attendance. You know, that was a discussion that the principals and Dr. McGuire had just today. What's the best way for us to, to look at taking attendance for students who are remote? So we're working through that. But I, I would say that I had real concern coming into this school year that students would be disengaged on the remote days. And unlike the spring, we haven't seen as, as much of that as I thought we would. I was pleasantly surprised to see that even when I'm just in taking attendance for a teacher who, you know, had an IEP meeting, that all the kids were there like waiting for the meeting to open. And as soon as I hit join, like they all popped in. So I say, I would think, you know, right, right now, overall, our students are really excited and are interested in being in their classes, both remote and both, both remote and hybrid.
Thank you. Todd?
Just to add to that, thanks, Principal Grady, for the specifics there. And we did meet several times this week with principals. And just so that the committee knows that, you know, there is a requirement to take attendance every single day from, from the state and from DESI. And we track, we track those attendance in our EP, what is called our EPN's data. And we file those reports quarterly with the state. And so even more so, we need to now this year be taking and tracking participation and calling it remote absent, remote present, if a student is remote, as well as if they are in school, that's a different, you know, so the coding has become very specific. And to the principals' work and efforts this week, they've worked really hard to calibrate that across all three towns so that we're all doing the same thing. And you heard them speak specifically to those asynchronous and synchronous check-ins. And that ties to the attendance and the monitoring that we're doing for students in terms of being engaged.
Thank you. Other questions? Amy?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question for Dr. McGuire about how that works on, for the asynchronous live check-ins. Is that how attendance is being taken for hybrid kids on independent learning days?
Yeah, so when they're remote, they've got their, they've got their initial check-ins with teachers and that will be the attendance that's calibrated. And we've been working on that this week. And then teachers obviously will be keeping track of any other check-ins. Let's say, you know, a student checks in earlier in the day, but then misses, say, you know, another later on. That will be, that will be calibrated and kept by the teacher. So should we need to make a change in any student's attention? So should we need to make a change in any student's attention, attendance later on?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I will thank the principals for your time being here tonight and also the extraordinary efforts on the part, I mean, your parts as leaders in the schools and your staffs and all you're doing to make this work. I know it's not easy. It can be frustrating. There can be high hopes and false starts, but we are persevering and the fact that kids are engaged and showing up. It's clearly a different venue for the, for the kids than in the spring. And so much hard work and effort. And we are so lucky to have the dedicated and talented teachers and of course leaders to do this for them. So thank you so much and thank you for your time. And I don't think we have anything else for you. So if, you're welcome to stay. But if you'd like to leave, have a wonderful rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you both. Great job.
Thank you.
For your support.
Thank you for the continued partnership. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are moving to the school committee rep job description, which requires action on our part. What I'd like to propose is that I turn this over to Leah and the policy committee. They sent out the job description. Now, I don't know if folks had an opportunity to give any feedback, but what I'd like to do is, because we're seeing this for the first time, give them an opportunity to present. And then we can either make a motion to accept and then discuss, or I don't know if there are things that anyone would want to suggest as changes. So let's start out with the presentation and any, any feedback. And then if we get to an appropriate point, we can, we can do the motion that way. I know that's not the way we're supposed to do it, but if we make the motion and then we want to amend it, it just, it's a thing. So let's try it this way. We have 20 minutes for this presentation. You don't have to take the whole 20 minutes if you don't need to. But Leah, I'm going to turn it over to you and your committee. And thank you so much for making this a priority and taking this on. So take it away.
Okay, so we have the job description that we constructed. Alita, I couldn't share it, so I just emailed the hyperlink to you. I don't know if you want to try to share the copy. We did make a couple of very small tweaks to it in our policy subcommittee meeting. So that said, what we have done here is we've taken the Mass General law and we, in like the spirit of the law, and we have constructed this job description. It's in a draft form right now, but if you guys choose to do so, we can approve it today. So there are a couple of pieces that we'll point out. So the student representative to the school committee is a non-voting member, but must be elected by the student body. And that is actually required by the Mass General law, that the student be representative. The position will be a one-year appointment or position. The school principal or his or her designee will be the one in charge of the annual election. It should be conducted in June and all NRHS students should participate or be given the opportunity to participate in that election. Candidates should be rising sophomores, juniors, or seniors. So that basically means everybody who is still in the school because seniors have graduated and so all of the underclassmen are eligible for this position. They should be in good standing at NRHS, similar to all club and sport participation, and have these four abilities. They should be skilled at interacting and interfacing with the student body, other student leaders in the building, and staff to identify areas of strengths in the school so as to promote that, and opportunities for improvement at the school so as to remedy that. They should attend our school committee meetings and be ready to contribute to the discussion when appropriate or called upon. They also act as a liaison between the student body and the school committee and the channel for student voice and the policymaking of the district. And finally, they will provide updates on the happenings of all the schools in the district, which is similar to the role that this person has played historically.
Okay, um, let me start by asking, I'm going to start with Rich because he's, unless, do you have your voice, Rich? Rich Eckel?
I do. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. So anyone have any questions for Leah? Steve and then Mary.
Yes. All members of the school committee have to, have to go through certain training, including conflicts of interest, Mass General law concerning meetings, meeting postings, what, what the responsibilities and legal requirements of the school committee are. And I would like to know if this person would be required to do that or at least some sort of training prior to taking their seat in June, July, August, whatever it is prior to September.
So it's a good question. Because they are not going to engage in the meeting generally, they engage as we see fit or appropriate, right? They have a moment at which they provide a report. And if there are any agenda items that are of relevant discussion for them, then they can stay to engage. But I'm not sure. So the law does not require that they go, that they go through any sort of formal training?
Thank you.
Follow-up?
Okay.
Okay, yeah. My only, my only follow-up would be you, you said, you know, they, they could leave the meeting. If they're, if they're a member of the school committee, even though they're an ex officio member, they should be here for the school committee meeting. And otherwise, they're just doing what, what the person historically did before, giving us a report on the activities in the various schools. Goodbye. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Steve. Mary?
That was my point, exactly what Steve just mentioned. And I would use the, this isn't casting any aspersions in regard to the, the really wonderful students who have performed this role in the past and come in and given reports and then left. But I would use the example of, let's say, a student is in a chorus and it's a, an evening performance. Well, certainly a student wouldn't just, let's say, having a solo. After they finish the solo, they would leave before the concert was done. They wouldn't. Also, if it were a sporting event, someone goes in and they, and they score, they score a touchdown and then they leave. So I would say that this, this person needs to stay because, to get back to Steve's first question, one of the ways that this student representative will learn about school committee is by experiencing it and being with us. So I, I can see if by any chance we went on and on and on and it was 9:30, 10 o'clock, you know, even 9:30, quarter of 10, then that student could be excused. But in the past, it was that the student had so much to do and so much homework that, you know, that they should be allowed to go. But we need that student. We need that student who's representing at least a thousand students and to be, to be with us, whether there's anything on the agenda that has to do with the high school or not. That's what this would, you know, this, that's what this student will be providing for us. So I'm strongly in favor. I also want to thank the subcommittee because I think they, they have the spirit of the law in regard to the student being elected democratically. So thank you, subcommittee.
Other comments or questions? Mike?
Thanks, Kathy. Leah, I just want to thank you and your subcommittee for putting this together. I'm sure it required a lot of work and a lot of thought and you were particularly considerate of, of, of the law when you were dividing this up. I, I just, my question is actually somewhat related to our presentation, our subcommittee's presentation. So if it, if it seems a little bit vague, let me know and I can, I'm sure I'll clarify it when it's my turn. But I wonder if it is appropriate for our student rep to be able to communicate out the reports or findings or votes that occur at a school committee meeting as part of their role, sort of as a way, as almost as a communication liaison? And I don't know if you have an answer to that, Leah. This might be a question very broadly to the rest of the committee.
So I read your subcommittee report, Mike, and I know where you're headed here. I think that to accomplish the goal that, that you are trying to accomplish, I, I would think that it should be somebody in a professional position who, a co, who does what you are hoping can be done.
Yep.
But that's not to say that this person isn't supposed to be a two-way communication street. So their job is to, and you're right, like, they would have to be at the whole meeting to then report back what occurred. And things do come up at the end of the meeting by happenstance that might not have been planned. So being at the, at the entire meeting, in my opinion, is not a bad idea. And actually, the definition as it's stated right now would allow for that. However, I think that that person's back communication is probably to the student government organization around what is relevant for them. Because I think that there's a lot of technical stuff that needs to be managed and somebody would have to like proof it anyway.
Yes, understood.
Other questions for Leah or Amy and then Joseph?
Um, we didn't discuss that, the, the, this issue of communicating back as part of our subcommittee discussion, but now that Mike has brought it up, I think that that should be incorporated into their role. Like the stated purpose of this person should be to be, part one of the additional responsibilities of this person should be to report back to their student government what's going on with the school committee. Even if it's only the items that are relevant to the student government. And even if it requires, you know, somebody to agree to what they're, to sign off on their summary.
Thank you. Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was wondering if someone from the subcommittee could enlighten me as to one of the provisions in their proposal regarding the participation of this individual in our meetings. By my reading of that proposal, it would appear that the student representative would sit on the committee ex officio, but would then be entitled to engage and participate in all matters that come before the committee? And it said something about it would be appropriate. Is it, is that something that the chair is going to determine when and where that is appropriate for the student rep to discuss? Or is, is the intent that the student rep is going to be the unelected 12th member of the committee?
So I don't necessarily have an answer for you because I think that what, at the foundation of your question is almost like the slippery slope argument. Will this person become as active as, say, I am in asking questions? And so I think that as part of onboarding this representative, we can help them understand the rules that Kathy is trying to lay down. But if they have a question, I would actually recommend that they are allowed to pose it and, and participate.
Other questions or comments? Elaine?
Oh, so I'm just gonna comment on that. So the, the term ex officio, non-voting member comes straight from Mass General law. So we, you know, pretty much copied and pasted that in there because that's what it said. The other school committees that I've seen and I've had this kind of...
Elaine, pardon me, I'm sorry. Somebody has something going on, so if you could be on mute or turn it off, that would be helpful.
It's not me.
I don't need to know who it is. I just need to stop. Can't, hard to hear.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
And so the other school committees that I've seen that have a student rep that is, I would say a fully functioning member of the committee. They do ask questions when they need to. It's more like whenever a topic about the high school comes up, the school committee kind of says, okay, so what do you think? And then they're free to share their, their opinions on that. Whereas something about like the discussion about E and D, they usually don't say anything. But that is kind of an informal arrangement. It's more of a culture thing than it is necessarily about setting rules about the topics. Seems like it works well when you get a good culture going and it kind of becomes a norm. I bet it would be bumpy when, if we started this the first year, maybe two years. But I think that's something you just kind of work out as it happens.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mike?
Just following up on everyone's thoughts about having the representative attend the entirety of the meeting. Not really a question, just a comment. I wonder if asking a student rep to participate fully in what is oftentimes a three or a four-hour meeting would serve as a deterrent.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Leah?
I could just respond to two of the concerns that were posed. So first of all, Amy's concern about the back, the back-channeling information. By virtue of us using the word liaison, I think that we're covered there. That the expectation is that this person is the two-way street. That they bring information forward and they also bring it back. So I think that's good. With regard to Mike, I think that this is going to deter certain people from doing the job. That said, in my experience, I've never had trouble finding somebody to do it who is actually really interested in sitting on the committee and being a full-time member. So I think it's also a part of building a culture of student leadership in our high school. And as we continue to build our student leadership structure, that more and more students will develop an interest in this, but we have to start.
Steve?
Yes, I have a concern while I, while I, approving this, I would say very definitely it should be a two-way street. But the liaison or the ex officio member should have the right to say and make their opinions known and be able to take our opinions back to his, his or her constituency because that's what we're dealing with here. I'm concerned about executive sessions and, and the confidentiality of such.
Excuse me, Steve. They're not a member, an active member. They're ex officio. They're not, would never be a part of an executive session.
Okay.
Okay? Um, other comments or questions? I'd like to make a comment and maybe it'll turn into a question. So I guess I think that I'm more interested in hearing from the kids, the student as representative of other students at the high school. I'm not so sure about really having, it'd be a hard festing for them to bring what we do back to the kids. Not sure what relevance that would have. But I, I found that the experiences last year of having listening sessions with kids and some other outreach that we did where we got good information from kids was very valuable for us. So that's my only comment. I'm, I think it's a valuable way for us to, to learn about the kids at the high school and what's important for them. When I look at some of the stuff that, that we do, I'm not so sure to make it a requirement that they go back and, and tell people what we do. I don't know many people, a lot of here are... Um, I don't know many people want to hear about what we do after the meeting's over. But, so I, I guess I'm thinking about it as a way to be really student-focused and with the emphasis on student voice and what we need to hear perhaps to inform some of our decisions than having it be, um, a, a two-way street. And that's just my opinion. Uh, Leah?
So I think that, um, I totally hear you on that. There's probably, you know, 85% of what happens in our meetings is, um, almost irrelevant to high school students. But if this position is properly done, I think that when these kids, when this representative brings kids' concerns to us, that student body is hopefully waiting with bated breath to hear what we had to say.
In those cases, absolutely, that, that part, but yeah.
15% of the meeting is all that that representative is going to bring back. You know, she will say, you know, X happened and this is what they're saying and this is what they're going to do.
Okay. So, um, any other questions or comments? Uh, Joseph?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just quickly, I don't have the, um, proposal in front of me. The statutory reference that's on the proposal, could, could somebody read that to me? I'm looking at the statute. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm looking at the right statute. Is it, is it, is it chapter 71, section 38m?
It is 7138m, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just deployment manager, you know. It's a very strange statute. I think we talked about this a few months ago. That, that statute does provide, strangely enough, that if the committee approves it, that the, uh, that, that the rep could be a part of any executive session. So.
Thanks for opening the can of worms, Joe.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at the statute and, you know, the law is the law.
Thank you.
What the statute says is, um, the, shall be an ex officio non-voting member of the school committee without the right to attend executive sessions unless, here's an operative word there, unless such right is, another word, another important adjective, expressly granted by the school committee. So I'm, I'm not sure what would be the extenuating circumstances. But Joe, unless we specifically granted that, then this, this member is, is, is ex officio, doesn't vote, um, but sits with us. And I think, as Leah said, the word liaison implies especially that back to student council or student group that would have presented something to us. And also, let's remember that we will be here with the student guiding her or him or, or them to, um, you know, and, and giving advice that this, this would be something to bring back. Do you have a plan to bring this back? This person isn't going to just all of a sudden be able to, uh, it took all of us, uh, when we were first on school committee to learn really the norms and the protocol. So I feel as though every one of us will be guiding this person and making suggestions and really listening very carefully to what the student has to say. And I, I really look forward to having a student with us.
So if I could summarize where we're at, the 21-minute point into this discussion, what I'm hearing is what, um, folks may want to see added to this is that there's a requirement that the student, um, participate for the entire meeting. And that part of their, their requirement would be to share information from the school committee back to their, um, whatever group they're representing. Now, that being said, and this is a totally different thing that will have to be worked out with high school, uh, leadership, is the, the actual nuts and bolts, the fine details of doing this. But for right now, we, um, have, um, a job description. So is it, am I correct, Leah, in that what folks, sounds like there is interest in adding that the student would be there for the whole meeting? And that, uh, they would bring, um, information and ideas and questions to the school committee and then would be, um, expected to bring that information back to the high school? Is that, I can't see it. I'm, I'm got a, got a thing going on here with my computer. But, um, does it say that in the, does it say that they would be required to stay for the whole meeting in the job description?
It says that they will attend, um, hold on. Attend NRSD's school committee meetings and contribute to the conversation when appropriate.
Do we need to put in there or is that one of the nuts and bolts to work out with, uh, um, the principal?
I think it's, um, I think it's assumed that they're attending the whole meeting.
Never assume.
Like, it's, it's embedded in there is what I mean.
All right, all right. But again, I think that this is the job description and there are more details that need to be worked out with, um, uh, the high school leadership team. And this, I think there's a member of the faculty who's interested in this as well. Any other things that, um, people feel we need to put in this description? Or, or, um, you don't want it, you want it comprehensive, um, but really clear about expectations? Does anybody want to move that we, do I, did we have a written, uh, motion for this one? Elaine?
Uh, yes, we do. Um, and there was a lot of great input just now, but I think for the purposes of a motion, we're talking about as presented. So speak now or forever, hold your peace. I move to approve the student representative job description as presented.
Second?
Second.
Now, any, um, further discussion or questions? Mary?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, um, what the subcommittee might recommend as, um, a way to get this started for this year.
Excuse me, Mary? I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we will get to that right now.
All right.
This is the motion on the job description. And that's a, that's a next step, but will involve, uh, the committee or representative of the committee meeting with the high school principal and his-
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I'm all set.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Are we ready to move the question? Okay, um, so I will do a roll call vote. Kathy Cody in, oh, let me check in with Rich. Rich?
Yes.
Yeah, anything?
Nope.
Okay. Rich, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Joseph?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
I'm mute.
No.
Uh, Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, uh, nine yes, two no. Uh, the motion is carried. Uh, thank you for your work. And then, uh, we will want to know next steps in terms of, um, bringing this into fruition, let's say.
So do you think that it's best for me to go through Brooke on that?
Um, just initially, you just, you know, you get permission to go and then you're on, then it just, then it just goes. But that's the proper channel, should be fine. Um, okay, thank you. So the next item on our agenda, um, is the communications subcommittee. Uh, their new initiatives, um, recommendations. And, um, as I mentioned, that, um, some of the AR stuff, action required, maybe should be ASR, action subsequently required. So let's see how far we get today. But whatever we don't finish today, we can move in again. Um, I've allowed 25, 20 minutes for this, um, item. So Mike, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you, Kathy. And, um, just as you did in the previous agenda item, please, please feel free to let us know when we reach the 21-minute mark. This doesn't need to go on, you know, for 45 minutes or so. But, um, Alita, I have, uh, I sent you a, a copy of sort of the updated version of, um, these proposals. I wonder if you can share that on the screen? Thank you so much. Oh, you're quick. So initially, I think the agenda item, um, said that these were, um, recommendations that we were coming for, in front of the school committee for, um, approval. But at this point, I think we modified it into, um, proposals for consideration. So just keep in mind that these ideas were a distillation of the members of the communications subcommittee's experiences and backgrounds. And while we thought we might be ready for recommendations, I think we're still in the fine-tuning stages of it. So a little bit more background, we, we've met four times in the past month and a half or so. Uh, one of those times was with, um, Superintendent Clancy and Dr. McGuire. And, uh, what, what we came up with are, um, three potential avenues for communication. And just to be clear, our intent is to distill down communication and, and concentrate it so that in the longer term, it creates less work for, um, our administration rather than the inverse. And we, we would welcome, um, your feedback on any or all of these, um, proposals. So the first proposal that we're, we're putting forth, and by the way, I'll be taking notes with your comments and then bring that back to our next, our next meeting. Our first proposal is, um, sort of a, a shift to a more consistent and predictable issuance of memorandum. As a committee, we look back on how often or how regularly, um, the district issues memorandum and updates. And of course, during the spring, some of those memorandum came out on a daily basis. I think once or twice it was a couple, couple memos in a day. But then there were also instances where there were large gaps in the late spring and over the summer. There was, um, a, a relatively large gap of three or four weeks where there were no memos issued. So, um, one of our proposals is to consistently issue a, uh, bi-weekly memorandum. So that not only can community members, uh, anticipate, but so that it gives the administration time to kind of concentrate, um, relevant items, um, in a single memo rather than spreading them out. I think one of the things that Brett said is, um, um, rather than a, a data dump, with, with so much, we sort of space it out regularly. And the idea was to issue these on Fridays so that, uh, and this was Superintendent Clancy's idea, so that, uh, there was time over the weekend to respond. Because typically when memos are issued, there is this influx of emails responding with questions, comments, things like that. So of course, ad hoc memos would be, uh, appropriate, um, to kind of fill in those two-week gaps. But the, the idea is not to let-
Not to let.
Does anybody else want to address the irony that this is the communications subcommittee?
Thank you, Rich. Who else we got? Sharon or Brett, you want to jump in?
I will try to continue what, um, I think Mike was trying to say is that, that his concern being that the communication, um, being, um, that if the communication were on a more predictable schedule, that people could count on that happening, which then may decrease, um, the level of uncertainty and the amount of questioning that happens. And so that people might be able then to count on and know that communication was coming and wait for it to come. I think that is where he was going with that. And that, uh, by putting it out on a Friday, it allows Brooke and Todd or whoever is doing the responding to the, um, to the email or the memo, an opportunity to respond. And that came about because they had both said that in the, over the past few months, whenever something goes out, there has been a big response to it. And so they had intentionally started putting things out on Friday, so they had the weekend to respond.
Thank you. Um, Mike, sorry, we lost you there for a while.
Am I to assume that that, that was the response to the first proposal to kick me out of the meeting?
It might have been the universe, it wasn't us.
Hopefully not.
So Mike, let's, let's do these one at a time. So I don't know if you guys have anything else to add on that first, um, proposal, um?
These are indeed proposals, they are fluid. We will sort of continue to shape them in subsequent meetings.
Okay. Um, any comments or questions from the committee? Amy?
Yeah, so are these, um, Mike, thanks so much for the work that your committee has put into thinking about communication, improving communication from the district. I just wanted to start off by saying that. I know you've put a lot of time into it. My question is, with these bi-weekly memorandum, which I think that sounds like a great idea to have regular, be able to anticipate regular communication from the superintendent. My, my question is, is that, and are those, is that, is what she sent, um, on October 2nd, I believe? Is that an example of the type of bi-weekly memorandum we would be expecting on a bi-weekly basis? Like, would it be an email with a link to the website? That's really what I'm trying to get to. Not, not the content, but just how the message is delivered.
Todd, you want to respond? Todd had it handed up, I think, no, yeah.
Sure, I know that we met with the committee and we certainly were in line with that idea on the bi-weekly memorandum. The intent of Friday's memo was to really kind of create some level of consistency. You'll notice a variety of the principals in their buildings do the same thing with their weekly and/or bi-weekly newsletters or memos on the front page of their websites. And it's embedded into what's called a smore. The high school does it, Laura Friend does it, Joel Bates does it. Um, and so we're trying to do the same thing. Feedback we received when we've been sending our memos out, when they go through an email and then they need to then click on some sort of a link or download the message, that was becoming cumbersome for some people and that was the feedback that we received. So what we wanted to do was embed that current memo into the website so we could just send out, send out a quick email to say, please click here to see, you know, this, this week's or this month's or whatever it looks like memo or update from central office news. So that was designed to make the accessibility easier. But certainly in terms of what you're proposing for the content of the memo, that certainly can be something that we obviously look at and include in terms of what you folks are looking for as well.
And, and I can, um, thank you, Dr. McGuire. I can also, I think I can speak on behalf of the subcommittee. When we met last night, I think we all, um, wholeheartedly agreed that that was a, a really nice way of issuing communication because it kept people with these links, these internal links, it kept people within the website to sort of illustrate that much or all of the information that people want is almost completely housed within our website.
Right.
And so that, it, it was, um, yeah, it was good to hear that, that, that that was your response to that because that sort of reflects sort of our vision.
Great.
Other comments or questions? Um, Sharon?
Another piece of that that is not, um, written in here, but that we talked about as well, is that the, the overarching goal is to streamline the communication and to make less work. So make the work that we do work harder.
So another piece of that was in a kind of a reevaluation point after giving it some set amount of time, which is not determined, but after giving it some set amount of time to reflect on that and say, is this doing what we hoped it would and is it reducing the workload and increasing the amount of information and access to information that people are feeling that they want and that they're getting that.
Can I, does anybody else have a comment? Because I have a couple of things. First of all, I think it's important for Brooke to be part of this conversation because it involves her and her office. The other thing, and I, Mike, I don't know if you had a chance to look at, I sent some questions and comments earlier, you may not have had a chance to see them. But in any event, I'm wondering where the need for this emerged from with, I don't know that we have done an evaluation of, I'm pretty sure we didn't, the communication plan that we put together two years ago. So I'd want to know, my first thing is, I'd want to know about how this decision was made. And then the second thing is that I think it's important to communicate when you have something to say as opposed to just saying, oh, I've got to get something out because it's week two. I'm sure there's plenty to say, but I'm thinking about things like the superintendent's updates, which come out to us every at every meeting, that's twice a month. Is there a way to put those forward for as part of this? So I don't know if you can address that or not. But I really do think we have to come back to this when Brooke is available to be part of the discussion, but if you could address the need, how you determine the need for this. And then the fact that the superintendent's update, I mean, and we saw the the central office news, which was great, and also the teaching and learning news that came out. So those are two things that I think are exceptional and they're different. It sounds like we're getting good feedback about them. Is there an intersection with those things? Are you thinking about something completely different from them? So?
Yeah, and again, I'm, I'll speak on behalf of the subcommittee, but you know, Brett or Sharon, you're welcome to chime in. Lots to address there, Kathy. The work, I think, kind of dovetailed really nicely with what the personnel subcommittee worked on last year with regards to the communication plan. I think we had kind of agreed that the communication plan as it existed was almost like a managerial communication plan, whereas what I think what was more in need of was disseminating communication to the community rather than, these are the things that need to be done in order to properly manage communication. And I think that there's a subtle but important difference there. So it did kind of flow from last year's conversation because we were sort of tasked with addressing the communication plan. And as a committee, once, you know, this in whatever format it gets delivered and potentially passed, we'll revisit that communication plan more in earnest. And I also think that your point about these new modes of communication is well taken. I think there is some intersection there. These are just ways to keep people abreast of what is going on. And I think that the that the memo that Teaching and Learning sends out, I think those are awesome. I think they're fantastic.
Yeah, and I think that maybe that these are new initiatives. They see, I would like you to take that into consideration instead of something different and look at, you know, I mentioned the superintendent's update. Those are also, people can access them from the website. There may be a better way to put them forward. But I don't want to get to the point where, you know, people see something coming and go, oh, my God, not again. Or, and the other point I wanted to make about the stuff that was pushed out in the spring, we were in crisis mode.
Understood.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, again, and again, fly by the seat of our pants, but I just want to make sure that there's balance and there's a recognition of some of the things that have happened. And again, you said, you know, just take everything into consideration. But again, I think Brooke needs to be part of this conversation. So I'll shut up now, I'm done.
Right, no, no, fair point. I also just want to address one thing about not sending out a memo just for the sake of sending out a memo. I think one of our conversations in the past couple of meetings was that there is value in saying things are actually well, there's not, you know, not in so many words, but things are going as we had hoped, there's not much to report. And that is still, that is still data gathering for our community. If there were issues that were brought up in previous communications that those issues either been resolved or that, you know, they are no longer standing issues. And I think there's value in that too. Just food for thought. I don't know where I stand, but I think we should probably get to the next proposal.
I was just going to suggest that. Do you have enough input from the group for this one?
I think so, yeah, I think so.
Great.
Quick to Mike? A big comment, Chairwoman?
Yes, I'm sorry, Leah?
I just wanted to say really, really quick, you guys are awesome and this is awesome. I think too that it should, that the communications should be about celebration. And there are so many amazing things that are happening in all of our schools all the time. And so carving out space for, and it can even be as easy as teachers entering into a Google form, I did this today. And then they can go to that Google forum and just cherry pick stuff that they want to throw into their updates. So I would say carve out a spot for all the celebration that is possible.
Point well taken. I think that the content of the communication is discretionary, at the superintendent's discretion, and I agree, I think there should be celebratory items in as well. So the second one is what I'll call our wildcard one, because it hasn't really been fully fleshed out, but I'm actually going to skip to the rationale of the proposal. We kind of gathered and understood that different residents access information about the district in different places. I know someone who religiously watches every minute of every school committee meeting at like 10 o'clock at night, probably with a bag of popcorn. And, but not everyone is able to do that. So we realized that some communication is gathered from the meetings, some communication is gathered from the superintendent's update from the website. We had considered maybe consolidating all of the events of a school committee meeting in a bi-weekly blast. Just a very kind of short, here's what the agenda items were, here were the results of the votes, here are future agenda items. Yes, there's some redundancy there. But again, the idea is to allow different people to access the information accurately and rapidly. We don't, we haven't quite determined who would be the gatekeeper of this. And that sort of went back to my question to Leah from her proposal about the role of the student rep. But, you know, it could be, it could come from administration, honestly, it could be controlled by a member of the school committee. And I also would put forth, I don't know how this conflicts with approval of meeting minutes, right? If there's a conflict of interest there, if the minutes haven't been approved yet, are we actually allowed to issue results of votes and things to that effect? So I know that there's some vulnerability in this proposal.
Can I say something?
Yes, Kathy.
I'm sorry, Mike, are you done with your thing?
Sure.
Okay. Couple of things. The minutes are the legal official record of the meeting. And they have to, in order to be complete, they have to be approved by the committee, and that doesn't happen until, until the next meeting. The other thing is that if, if somebody wants to write a summary of the meeting and push it out, like in some school districts, and I I wrote, this is what I wrote to you early today. At a previous meeting, I was at with Dorothy Presser, I think it was a chair workshop or something, but there were people on other school committees that actually have a Facebook page for the school committee and they just use it to push stuff out, they don't take any comments or anything. People do this, but the minutes are the official legal thing. The other thing is that the meetings are recorded and that the recordings are a primary source. They are what actually happened. As soon as someone watches that or recalls from their experience what they recall, it's no longer in a primary source. So a suggestion that I had, and somebody that recorded these, this was maybe four years ago, I remember this. Maybe it was Bolton, somebody else did it. Anyway, the people recording our meetings, there was somebody who actually took each agenda item and coordinated it with the video so that when you clicked on an agenda item, you automatically went to that. So you didn't have to scroll through and see the whole thing. Then the last thing I'll say is that I heard you mention administration doing this. Alita is our secretary of record for our regular meetings. She does the minutes. And there was a format for doing that. I don't know that everybody's aware of that. She is Brooke's secretary, but she's also Todd's administrative assistant slash secretary. And in many school districts, the assistant superintendent has their own assistant. When I was in Concord, I had two. That's how lazy and incompetent I was, and I needed two people to support me. But I really have a hard time in thinking that this would be something for Alita to do. So if somebody on the committee wanted to do it, but recognize, we have to recognize that the minutes that we approve are the official and legal record of the meeting. So
Yeah, and
Again, I'll be quiet.
I think, I think the presumption that someone like Alita would do this is frankly unfair. I think our point is that this is sort of in the interest of all of these parties and that hopefully someone can sort of take the lead on this. And you know, maybe, maybe it does come, maybe that's part of our role as the communications subcommittee. Again, not fully fleshed out, but we just wanted to get some initial feedback from you guys.
Okay, I know I said I was going to shut up, but I'm sorry, Mary, just one last thing. But how do you know this is what people want? Where is, where are you getting this data to know that this is something people want? So it might be rhetorical at this part, but
Not rhetorical. I think, I think quite honestly, it comes from the fact that there is an abundance of misinformation out there, and this would just be another way to get a direct line of communication. Not as a primer, as you said, but as a close secondary form of connection to our meetings.
Thank you. Mary, I'm sorry that I
That's okay. So when I first read this, what's already been discussed was it seemed to me, well, this would be the minutes and that we need to approve them. But also, I would say that we have to sit through, I mean, we have the privilege of serving on school committee and get to be here for all the hours. And certainly, people are savvy enough to be able to take an agenda and scroll through because you can do that, that's not going to take too much time. Then people get to see the primary source of this meeting, which is being recorded. So I don't see the need for this. And I also, I really want to encourage people to think about running for school committee because people seem to want to tell us how to do our job all the time. And now we're going to make it even easier, we're going to write down things so people, as a citizen, people should watch these meetings. And if they can't watch them when they're live, they can go back and they can scroll through and they don't have to listen to everything. But I don't see a reason for this.
Thank you, Mary. Amy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I do see a part of the duty of being a school committee member is to try to share information with our constituents. And so I see this as a way of improving how we're sharing information in a more timely fashion. And I can, I can give you two examples. Since when I've been on school committee where I feel like there have been decisions that affect that are important decisions that affected a lot of people that weren't there was really no mechanism in place for communicating them quickly or efficiently. The first one that I felt that there was a void there was the mascot decision. And the second one was the the oh my gosh, I'm blanking on it right now. It'll come back to me. But I felt in both cases that there was a need to get that information out more quickly. Oh, maybe it was the calendar. And, you know, I think that this is happening one way or another where school committee members are sharing this information with groups of people. And it would be good to, so I'm in favor of the idea of trying to do a more concerted effort of getting timely updates, even if it's just results of the vote, you know?
We're at 24 minutes, but we have, if you, I see Leah, any other hands that want to make a comment? So Leah, and then Joseph, and then Elaine.
So I was just going to say, I think sustainability is a really important aspect of this. And that we might need to look into hiring somebody to become the communications specialist of the district. There are districts that invest money in this, it doesn't have to be a full-time position. And so I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Joseph?
Madam Chairman, quickly, are you going to call for a vote on this? Because if you're not going to call for a vote this
No, no, I'm sorry, Joseph, not tonight.
Okay, then I'll hold, I'll hold my question because
Okay, I think Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I was going to echo your sentiment and that of my colleague from Bolton, Dr. McCarthy. From a legal perspective, I think that this is exceedingly problematic. And at the risk of not, I don't want to take up too much time on this, but the one thing that I think may be overlooked here is that I think when it comes to our minutes, and as far as I'm concerned, the summary of agenda items addressed in the most recent meeting, vote outcomes and future agenda items, those are minutes. And one of the things that we don't, I mean, I think that maybe to some, the approval of our minutes is perfunctory and ministerial. But they shouldn't be. And one of the things that we have yet to do, or during my time on the committee, and perhaps it is a testament to our recording secretary, Ms. Masterson, is that it is appropriate that when we look at these meetings and we look at approval, they are subject to modification and it's subject to change when we go to approve it. So I think it is, it is a poor decision to be putting out votes, vote outcomes, and a summary of what we've done until we've approved it. In addition to that, and it hasn't happened on my term, but it did happen just prior, there was a vote of the committee that had to go to legal counsel for further scrutiny. So again, without trying to belabor this, I just couldn't concur more with you, Madam Chairman and Dr. McCarthy. I don't think this is something we want to do.
Thank you. I think the goal tonight is to give the committee, the communication committee, some input to go back and talk about things. Elaine?
Thanks. I just want to say that there, I think there absolutely is a need and has been for years to do something of this nature. We've tried some similar things in the past and they haven't worked for, I think largely logistical reasons, who's going to do it, how is it going to be managed, that kind of thing. But I really think that it's worth continuing to pursue. And so I thank the communications subcommittee for trying to continue to push forward with this because like I can't go out in public or go on Facebook or do anything every day without people saying, what happened at the school committee meeting? What happened with this? Hey, what's going on with the calendar? What's going on with this? How's this going? And I know some of that comes with the job, but there's an immediacy to the communication that is just not there if people have to wait two weeks to go find minutes and read them. And honestly, I know, I know watching the video would be the best. Nobody does it. Um, and read them and and honestly, I know people, I know watching the video would be the best. Nobody does it. Nobody's going to do it. And so I think if we, if the goal is actually to get. The community the information they need, then we have to do it in ways that they consume information. Like, we talk about our students, meeting them where they are, you know, should we go to this app? Should we, how, should we change all of our teaching methods based on how students learn and. What students today and are doing. I'm like, I kinda feel like we need to do that for the parents, too. Um, I know there's boundaries that that need to be set and that's fine. Um, but I I still, I still think this is worth pursuing.
Any other questions? Do you have enough, Mike?
Yes, we have plenty and I'm glad that we're all in agreement on this.
So if I can steal your thunder for a minute, the coffee with the superintendent, if I could cut to the chase.
Sure, cut to the.
That was a recommendation in Brooke's evaluation and you can anticipate that that will be one of her goals. So I don't know if that makes a difference in terms of our discussion or not. This is of the three, this is the easiest one from my point of view. I don't know if anyone else has any comment about it. But it was in her evaluation um a recommendation and um I anticipate it'll be a goal. Mike's got his thumb up. Amy, is that a thumb up or a question?
Uh, a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I think that it's a good goal to have, but honestly, one coffee with the superintendent per town per year. Didn't seem, doesn't seem like enough from my point of view.
The process in Brooke's setting goals is that she works with the PSC to develop. To, she presents the goals and then they are developed in the format as prescribed by the DESE. Model evaluation system and then they come to the school committee for final approval. So you can see what they look like at that point. Um, it may look different. Um, and there's an opportunity to offer input and comment at that time. Is that helpful? Mike?
I would also add that I, even though they're being held in the three different towns, they're not gonna be exclusive to those residents. So. It's effectively three meetings, three of these meetings a year just held conveniently in in each town at each um each separate meeting. But point well taken.
But but right now, that's what the plan is right now, but by the time we see her goals, it may look different. I'm just saying, I don't know. Mary?
And and these could certainly be done virtually at this point, which um to what Mike was talking about would mean that. Um, people from other other towns could certainly uh zoom in too. I mean, there would be a way to start this, even if it were remotely for in the beginning.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the communication committee? I don't see any. Mike, you have enough to go back to?
Uh, plenty. Thank you for everyone's feedback. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And we can roll this over to an agenda item for next week. Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, school committee meeting venue update. Uh, Todd?
Yep. So I know um that we provided you with the specifics, uh, the proposal to the district. That um comes um. From the company that uh Succi worked with and they presented it to him. Um, I know that um. They provided and you folks asked for the specifics and the specific um. Line items for cost. Um, so if you were to take a look at that particularly. Um, the only um venue that can be offered to. Certainly house all of us for a school committee this large really is the center school as it offers the greatest flexibility. Um, Succi sent us all the estimate for cost, which comes out to roughly just over forty-six thousand dollars to equip the center school cafeteria. With the necessary AV equipment for us to do in-person meetings, given the current circumstances that we're under. Um, we have spoken with a lot of other school districts who are also doing school committee meetings differently. Uh, most are staying in remote meeting status until the governor changes the guidance around health, et cetera. Um, and again, our our school committee tends to be a lot larger than most other school committees. Uh, which makes our um in-person time that much more difficult because of the more space that we need. So I know Kathy, you're looking for, I believe, an action vote on tonight based on what was presented in this proposal. Um, but that's the ultimate cost to be able to move our meetings in person with the necessary equipment. Uh, to provide that we can do it for this committee.
Um, so any questions for Todd? Um, Amy?
Yeah, if if we purchased this equipment, would it be able to be used for other purposes by other staff members for other? Like, would it have other use other than just for the school committee to come together and meet?
Perhaps, you know, at just at the center school, but it's not like this is um equipment that could be moved around the district. It's obviously stationary equipment and it would have to be housed specifically. Uh, and stationed at in this specific center school um environment. So, but there hasn't been any discussion from that I'm aware of to be using it for anything other than. What is needed for the school committee needs.
Other questions?
I had a I had a comment, Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rich might know more too about this. I know that he and Succi and Alita did have a meeting over there. Um, about this. And I know you guys are supposed to meet today, but we're unable to do so, so.
Yeah, I'm a, we're gonna see if we can do something cool with the Apple HomePod, the speaker. And um, see if we can get this done for a few thousand dollars, if if not under a thousand. But um. Uh, I think the other thing to to Amy's question is. Stow had their their annual town meeting in Center School last uh spring. Or I guess it was summer by the time we had it. But um, so. I guess what I would say is uh that we should be entertaining the town of Stow if we're gonna be using Center Schools. Um, uh, you know, auditorium cafeteria to to kick in some bucks to um to help. If we do need to go that way because it it would be used for that and of course, all types of performances, you know, so.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Did anybody else have a comment? Mary?
So did we receive this proposal? We got this so we could look at this?
I thought it was part of the meeting materials.
It is. It's located in the meeting materials.
What's the title of it? Oh, CCS school setup quote. It's so it's the next to the last thing in the meeting materials.
Yep, so I must have missed that. But um there's certainly um somewhat of a difference in the amount of forty-six thousand. Versus what um Rich is talking about uh of less than a thousand. Um, so I I don't see how we, without having whatever that proposal might be, which sounds hopeful and and. Perhaps the town of Stow um would see value in that. Um, but I I don't, are we being called to have a vote on this tonight?
No, it's at some point, actually, this is one of those ASR things. Um, but this is new information. There is another option that that Rich um needs to discuss with Succi and Rob. Um, but I think this idea that Rich is raising. That if the town of Stow can utilize the uh center school for town meeting or other town-based things. Um, maybe approach, and it's not not us that would approach him, but somebody like a Brooke talked to. Uh, the town of Stow about um um absorbing the cost or some of the cost or or something. Um, I guess the bottom line is I don't think we're ready to to do anything about this at this point. Uh, we need more information and if we feel that this is the most viable option. And it is of value to the center school. Then I think it would be a good idea to explore the extent to which the town of Stow might assist us. Any other thoughts?
Just just that forty-six forty-six thousand dollars is um quite a chunk of money.
Lot of money, right?
And and under a thousand dollars sounds much more more possible and. Um, anyway, I would I would just wish wish Rich a lot of luck in coming up with. You know, a a more reasonable uh priced alternative here.
So it sounds like at this point, uh, we wanna see what Rich's option is. Um, and also um see if Brooke can have a conversation with the town administrator in Stow. About the possibility of perhaps getting some help with this, if not getting them to take the whole thing. So I will move this to um next agenda as well. Um, somewhere I have a list of all our good agenda ideas. School, um, center. Okay. Okay, that brings us to the um. Um, what happened to Pat? Oh, Pat, we completely skipped over the E and D presentation. I'm sorry. Okay, it's information only. So should go. Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, give me one second. So I first wanted to start to explain to you a little bit about um the certification of E and D. Every regional school district must maintain an E and assess its efficiency E and D account. In cities or towns, this fund is referred to as a free cash and in private business, this is similar to retained earnings. So um I, Alita, can you put up that um E and D and free cash calculation for me? But what I've done is I've um, I've put up a sheet kind of explaining what actually happens. Um, so as part of the year-end close, my office goes through the process of closing the book and in doing so. Our net um revenues and expenditures will go into what they call undesignated fund balance. And um in that process, as you can see at the top of this page, um. The undesignedated fund balance is the beginning part. And at that point, you would look at your receivables and you would minus them out and then you'd also uh minus out any. Debit balances and other funds. Other funds would be, um, if you had a deficit balance in, say, one of your revolving funds. At that point, you would have to deduct that. Um, anything that's prepaid, which would be um. An expenditure that was for the following fiscal year, that would also have to be backed out. And then also, um, any money that you're using to run your budget. For um the upcoming year would also be deducted. So in looking at that, so i- it's as of July first every year. Um, I would go through that process and submit it to um the Department of Revenue. And they would look at it and they, I send them um my books and, you know, in file balance format and they review it and decide. What they wanna do that because sometimes um, sometimes revenue comes in like in July and August. And I have to um prove to them that that money was actually for the previous fiscal year. So it, all in all, um. It's it's a an easy process. Um, it, once you, you know, finish closing the books. But um, I think I think that's about all of it. Um, does anybody have any questions about? Any of the terms? I know some of them are foreign. I don't hear the term undesignedated fund balance all the time or. Um, you know, the debt and the other funds or anything like that. Does anybody have any questions about any any of those terms? No?
Okay.
So um, does anybody have any question about E and D going forward?
So Pat, I had sent a couple of questions. Did you address those?
I I believe that I did. I went through the process of what E and D was and uh one of the questions, um. One of the other questions was um, if we needed to use E and D, how would we do that in this given year? So the process would be to amend the budget and that the amended budget would be. Increase the expenditure line where we would be spending any additional um money. And then we would also amend the revenue. And we would be allowed to do that only because. Um, without having to present it to the towns, only because we wouldn't be um asking them to increase their assessments. So that that's the process. Say we needed a hundred thousand dollars from E and D, I would um, you know. Increase the budget by a hundred thousand, the expenditure budget, and then increase the revenue budget by a hundred thousand dollars. So it's not going to affect the assessments. If that, you understand that as far as what I mean, that it has net effect on the assessments. So if we can do this, it's something that I would think that we would do probably. We'd start talking about it maybe in April because we don't know how things are gonna go.
Mm-hmm.
As far as that goes, I I don't foresee it at this point, but you never know. Um, we haven't even got into the. Winter. Um, we don't know what it would be like if we for some reason or other had to go full remote. There are many expenditures that we didn't anticipate. And again, um, it's the continued expenditures related to PPEs and social distancing. So, okay, any questions?
Leah? Leah?
Um, okay, sorry. So um, are you gonna, I feel like the last time that we met to talk about this. Um, I thought that we were gonna have like numbers. And that we would understand how much is in E and D right now and how much we're using for this year's budget, et cetera.
Well, we certified on. July first, two thousand nineteen, we certified two point two six six. Million, so, um. At as soon as June thirtieth passes by of the following year. Which would be June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, E and D is no longer in existence. In existence for us. It's not certified anymore, so we can't spend it until we recertify. But we have until the end of October to submit our paperwork. Some of our paperwork has already been prepared, working on closing the books now. And as soon as I'm done, I I can submit and I hopefully I'll qualify the deadline and. Depending on how things go, this is a busy month for me. Um, and I would think we're probably going to certify around the same. As I, as I had talked about a couple of weeks ago.
So we should have the new number by the first meeting in November, you think?
Well, I submit my paperwork. That doesn't mean they certify it right away. I don't know if you remember, it took a while last year because they'll have questions and then they'll get back to me and they're also working remotely, a lot of them. So it was really slow last year. So I I don't know. I I couldn't tell you when we'll have a certified. Maybe if I could get it in early enough, maybe we'll have it in a reasonable time period.
Okay, Amy?
Yeah, so I had submitted um two questions. One of them was. Regarding the minimum balance that's required to be maintained in the E and D fund because I thought that maybe that was a consideration.
There is no minimum balance required. Um, it's maybe a recommended balance that you decide as a committee. If you.
Okay.
You decided on a certain number that you wouldn't want E and D to go down below, you could make that decision. And then, um. You know, is, on the other end, we can only have E and D that's five percent. It can't exceed five percent of the following year's budget. So then we, at that point, we would have to give money back to the community, so.
Yeah, so like two point two six six million is right around the five percent mark of our operating budget. Is that right?
Um, no, five percent at that point for that one would be two point seven five nine. Million.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that.
No, we're not really close to that. No, we're not really close to that. And and it will be less, I'm sure, only be unless we have funds to put back in, which I don't know if that's going to happen.
Amy, I'm sorry, this is information only. You have two questions.
Oh, that was a follow-up to the, you know, to clarify what five percent was, don't you think?
Yeah. How many times do we have to clarify what the five percent was?
Please, you're out of order. So Amy, what I would like to suggest is that perhaps to get in touch with Pat, have the conversation about the specifics of your questions. This was an overview about the process and the numbers. So
Kathy, may I just ask my my second question?
Sure.
Because I've heard it asked many, many times, and I feel like it would benefit the community to hear the answer. Is there any ability to spend to to use this fund to purchase equipment or hire staff? That
Yes.
Okay.
And and I believe I just said that if we had to spend more money and go to E and D, there's a process we have to go through, but we could do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, without objection, I will move to the next item, which is about the Building Committee. Todd, as information?
Yeah, sure. So quickly, as it relates to School Building Committee, we've had a few meetings with our Brittany Gomes, who is our liaison over at the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who's kind of overseeing and working with us on our project. And we know that we've got a deadline to submit our Building Committee membership to the MSBA. We also have a deadline to commit our educational profile that we've been working extensively on with Jake Foster. In speaking with the superintendent, we we've been working together with them, and we've indicated that we have created a plan in constructing the building committee for our high school MSBA process. And we're going to be sending out a memo to our community shortly to inform them of the process as well as to recruit community members and parents on this committee. The committee is is pretty specified in terms of its membership and what they ask for. But in terms of community members, we will be reaching out to the community with a memo to recruit those from each individual town of those who might be interested. There is also a school committee member to be on that committee, and that school committee member really serves as a liaison to the school committee as well as the building committee by serving on it. So that school committee member, somebody from this group, would be that liaison between here and there in terms of what's going on with that process. So information will be going out to the communities on that and what that membership looks like. And then I know Brooke indicated that she would be looking to recruit members from the community to be a part of that.
Amy, question?
Yeah, Dr. Maguire, I know Brooke is not here tonight, so I I'm not sure you're able to answer this, but she had, when would school committee members expect to hear about being on the committee? Because she reached out to us. But I have, you know, if you've offered to be on that committee, when would you expect to hear back about it?
Well, I think that there's some people have reached out, obviously, and offered, but we certainly want to put out the memo that explains the process to everybody and then get a sense from who in the communities would be. We did ask for an extension on this process, given that we're in the middle of a pandemic and all of the other things that have been on our plate. So they did grant us an extension through this month. So we do have some extra time for that. So I would I would anticipate that once we get the memo out, we'll then give it some time to get feedback and identify who's interested and then move from there.
And it's going to be one member from the school committee, is that what you said?
From what I from what I understood from her, it would be one one school committee member on that committee.
My understanding is the last building project was at the Center School, and there was one member of the school committee. And again, it's a liaison, but I would also hope that the information coming forward would, you know, outline the time commitment and what the responsibilities are. I think that is helpful for people to understand in terms of trying to balancing everything that they have going on.
Yeah, that was a part of our meeting that we had to make sure we were we putting out the correct outreach and in process for that. So.
Thank you. Other questions for Todd about this? And again, this was something that Brooke prepared to speak to. But as much as he can, Todd will address any other questions. Seeing none, I will move on to committee reports. Mr. Rubenstein, do your report.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Chairperson. On September 30th, the Budget and Warrant Committee met. I was designated or elected, whatever it is, of the as the chairman and school committee member Joseph Gleason was elected the secretary. We met with the superintendent and the business manager at that time. And since the business manager has or at least in the last couple of years, we've been regularly getting the financials for the previous month on the second meeting following the end of the month, we will continue that. Plus, we will meet prior to all those financial reports being posted at for the Wednesday School Committee Meeting. It usually happens on a what, a Friday afternoon or a Monday morning. We will meet either the previous Wednesday or Thursday so that we can ask any questions and have the information available to us. We have asked the business manager, when she does her financial reporting, to primarily concentrate on those line items that are being impacted either positively or negatively by the COVID pandemic. And hopefully, when those are reports are given, we will be able to supplement the information provided by the business manager and make it fully understandable to our members of the committee. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Policy, anything further to report?
So in addition to the Student Voice element, we also are picking up speed around efficacy of school councils. So Brooke had hoped to join us today to discuss that in more practicality, but clearly she wasn't able to do that. So we'll invite her to join us at our next meeting, hopefully with a principal or two to discuss how our policy can come more into line with Mass General Law and basically using the school councils as a more kind of, I don't know, functional is the word, but a better avenue for community input into school-based decision-making.
Thank you. Mike, anything further from our communication?
Nothing other than the fact that our next meeting is on Tuesday where we'll be collating the unanimous opinions of our proposal and coming up with some sort of recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's see. Items to be considered for future agendas. What I have on the planning calendar for October 21st is budget timeline, business manager report, elementary school principal update. There's an item on promoting equity acceptance and regular justice that I think Lane is going to speak to at that meeting. Equity Committee is the note I have.
Sure.
Yes. Then from tonight, questions posed by constituents about the high school and transitioning to in-person learning. The Communications Committee will bring forward their proposals. I don't know if the high school survey will be ready for presentation, so I have that question mark. We want information about subs, how they're working, the Remote Learning Academy, as well as the other remote learning that goes on in the district. And then we'll, I have School Committee Meeting Venue Center School. We'll see where we are in progress toward that. Is there anything else that you want to consider? Oh, Mike, I think that there was a listening session that you wanted to report out on in Bolton, is that correct?
I thought that was the, I thought you had already mentioned that. That 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 wasn't really a Bolton-specific thing. It was more of a high school parent thing.
Oh.
I thought I thought you had already mentioned that.
No, you had asked that it be on tonight's agenda. And I had said we can put it on the next agenda if you need to report out on that, that you and Amy Yeah. Okay, I'll put it in session, report out. Okay, that's on the agenda too. And then if you take a look at some point, we have reorganized the planning calendar. The parking lot is a lot less crowded. We moved things on to the agenda and identified some things that we need to be looking forward to. And then the things we would like regular updates about. Um, but is there anything else, perhaps, looking at it for next time, to come forward with any other things that you'd like to see added? I realize that perhaps you haven't had an opportunity to look at the planning calendar. So anything? Okay, um, I think that
I'm sorry, I have something for you.
Sure.
I'm not sure if this if there will be an update, but maybe just to keep it in the foreground a little bit, the principal search.
Yes, that's on the regular updates.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is a new version of it. So it's in the, you can find it in the meeting materials. It's it reflects the update, but it's in there, Leah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So without objection, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mike, move second.
Second.
Leah, second. So, okay, Kathy Codyan, yes. Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Brett Collins.
Yes.
Rich Eckel. And Joseph Gleason.
Yes.
And Mike Horash.
Yes.
And Mary McCarthy.
Yes.
And Sharon Park.
Yes.
And Steve Rubenstein.
Yes.
Elaine Sanclippo.
Yes.
And last, but not least, Leah Vridov. Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.